Okay. So pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the North End of a Board of Selectmen will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and internal guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town website at www.northendofma.gov. For this meeting, the members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so on their televisions by tuning to Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 26 or online at www.northendofcam.org. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the north end of our town, North End of the website, an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Okay, so I will ask that if you're not speaking, go on mute, get a little bit of background noise, courteous to other folks. Okay, I'm going to call the order, meeting of the Board of Selectmen and License and Commissioners for Tuesday, May 19, 2020. We're going to start with public comments, so we received at least two public comment for tonight's meeting. We're going to waive the reading of those comments and we will enter those into the record as the official record for the meeting. Laurie, was that it? I believe it was two, is that correct?
Yes, we only received two and they are both attached at the back of the link for whatever gender item it applied to.
Okay, great, so both of those public comments will be included in the record of the meeting. Okay, next on the agenda, so we don't have anybody live on the meeting for public comment, do we?
No, the number wouldn't have been shared.
Okay, great. All right, so next on the agenda, we have a public hearing for a petition by National Grid to run and maintain underground conduits and Montero Way. Do I have a motion to move into a public hearing?
You need to read the statement.
Oh. Which one would that be?
Regarding the public hearing? In the executive summary?
Okay, I have one at the, made at the beginning of the meeting and then...
Right. There's a, there's a separate one when you have a public hearing.
Okay. All right, so pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the North End of a Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. I remind them that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by tuning to Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 26 or online at northendofma www.northendofcam.org. If you have public comments, please email selectmen@northendofma.gov. Okay, so we'll now hear a motion to move into a public hearing. Anyone that's on mute can do it.
Mr. Chair, moved at the Board of Selectmen, open public hearing to receive comments regarding National Grid petition for Quail Run and Montero Way, roll call vote is required.
Okay.
Regina Keane, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and second, and we'll do a roll call vote, and we're going to go in the order. We will go with Rosemary, Phil, Regina, Chris, and then myself. That'll be the order we'll follow tonight.
Rosemary Smedele, aye.
Phil DiColigero, aye.
Regina Keane, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye. Okay, we're now in a public hearing. Do we have a petitioner online? I'm sorry, I think I saw a couple coming on.
Hi, this is Chris Wellington from National Grid.
Good evening, Chris.
David Bruce.
Good evening, David.
So I can give a quick synopsis of the plan, if that's okay?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so what we have is a pre-existing direct buried primary electric cable system that feeds Quail Run and Montero Way, and our plan that we submit to you tonight is to install a new conduit or a conduit system via directional drill, which is much less disturbing to the area, and the, the new conduit and cable system will be installed along the edge of pavement. There'll be very little disturbance to the area, only where we need to dig a pit to use the drill to enter the earth, and then when we exit the earth near a transformer. So we'll be drilling under most of the driveways or all of the driveways along the route. Should we need to cross a utility that exists, we, we dig down with a vector truck to expose the existing utilities, and then we watch the drillhead pass by these utilities. Should a utility crossing be in a driveway, we may have to create a small window to see the drillhead pass the existing utility, but we will, will replace the end of the driveway when we, if, if that should happen to happen, so we don't anticipate that, but it, it is possible that that could happen. So we'll drill down the length of the, if your, your back is to Chestnut Street and you're looking down Quail Run, it'll be the, the right side of the, of the street. We'll come all the way around that loop, and then we'll take the right onto Montero and go down to the last transformer that's down at that end, and again, staying within the public right of way, but along the edge of the pavement. Any disturbance near a transformer, we will restore the area, do lumen seed to bring it back as close as possible to what was there prior to our work. And then for start date, we expect to be starting the project end of July. Probably about a week to be in and out of that location.
Dick, I think you're speaking, but you're on mute. I can see your lips moving.
Yes, thank you. I was heeding my own advice to go on mute. So yes, thank you, I believe that was Chris that was giving us...
Yes, it was.
Okay, thank you. So any other input from National Grid before we move to the board for comments or questions? Normally we'd have to be at podium and I'd be able to tell if you still had more to say, but I, I can't tell this way, so I'm going to...
This is David, I just, Chris said it all, he pretty much had everything to say on the subject.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, it's Laurie. I just received another public comment.
Okay, so that would be our second public comment for this, for this particular hearing. So let's, I'm going to open it up to the board first, if there's any questions or comments from the board, and then we'll go to public comments. Okay, hearing none. Laurie, oh, Laurie, do you want to read the public comment into the record?
Sure.
Or if we could have the clerk do it, I don't know if she has the latest copies that you have, though.
It's up to you. I just forwarded it. I don't know if you have access. Your email.
Yeah, I do. Actually, I can read them in, okay.
Mr. Chair, I'm fine with having Ms. Burdott read them, Rosemary Smedele.
Okay. Laurie, would you want to go ahead and read them?
Okay. The one we just received from resident at 127 Quail Run. What provisions for remote working and schooling will be made? Will generators be provided to circumvent the interruption of electricity to refrigeration, air conditioning, and aforementioned remote working schooling? We are in a pandemic and normal living conditions no longer exist outside the home. Therefore, the majority of people are remaining at home to work, learn, and remain safe. Why was this issue not addressed by National Grid prior to the street repaving that occurred in 2018? And will the street be repaved and curbs repaired?
Okay, I can respond to that. So during the construction, there will be no outages. We'll be installing a new conduit system with new electric. We will need to take an outage to cut over to the new cable. That typically is about two to three hours, and we send notifications out prior to doing that, and we can hold off on outages until the fall if we have to, which is fine. And then the way we've designed this plan to install the cable and the conduit, we don't need to cross any of the streets and we won't be disturbing the roadway, so, and that's why we are petitioning tonight to do it in this method instead of, there was a previous plan that we need to do a road crossing on the end of Montero and we've changed the design, so we won't be cutting any streets and there will be no restorations required for street paving. And, and an outage to cut over again is, is, we're looking at a couple hours and there'll be plenty of notice given, and I understand people are home and we can move the outage off until the fall.
Okay, well, that, that's, that's good input. I, I understand the concern. Everybody is, you know, the home is now everyone's base of operations for everything, work, education, eating and every, every meal. So I can see, I certainly understand the concern about losing power during that time period. So I, I like the fact that you can hold off until maybe we're more into a normal situation. So you can do the work, but just hold off on the actual, over until...
So what this allows...
And we'll just hold off.
One, one, one quick comment is that what this allows us to do is that, you know, this, this street has had a, a history of power outages, so once we have the cable installed and if there's a power outage, we would respond by sending a crew out to dig up the cable, find the cable fault, and it's very lengthy to do that. We, if we have the, the new cable in place and conduit, we would be able to switch over to that new cable relatively quickly. So there is some advantage to at least having it in place, and if an outage should occur because of the history of the cable, we could address it at the time, but we, in the meantime, with, if that doesn't happen, we certainly can wait till September to do the job, to, to, you know, cut over to the new cable.
All right, thank you. And then we have one other public comment?
Yes, would you like me to read that one?
Yes, please.
Okay, this is from a resident at 25 Montero Way. Been residing at 25 Montero Way, North End of, for the last 14 years. About two years ago, the town paved Quail Run and Montero Way since its initial development for the first time in roadways looked great. I fully understand that replacing the National Grid underground cables is necessary as it is old, and we have had issues with these old cables in the last few years. Last year, there was an incident that the entire subject area lost power and National Grid did some temporary fixes of underground cables. One of the fixed location was at my driveway. There is a transformer on my property by my driveway that National Grid has easement that services the entire Montero Way. My only concern and request is that after the underground cables are replaced, I would expect a reconstruction of the pavement, and in my case, my new three-year-old paved driveway to be done to the best industry standards so that we don't end up with paved areas that sink through time and look like many other patch spots around town, like the ones on Chestnut Street. To do the repavement right, they need to compact the excavated area well, then place an asphalt subbase 2.5 inches, and then an asphalt top coat 1 inch. The subbase and topbase need to have the proper thickness for the correct pavement that is needed, and we expect. Thank you all for your attention to this very reasonable request and expectation. And Mr. Chair, I just wanted to add that the, is a memo from the DPW regarding the work under the moratorium, and with additional requirements that the work be done and carried out in a certain way due to the road being under a moratorium due to the recent work, so this work should all be done in and under the grass shoulder only. There should be no trenching through the new, new pavements, and so when you do your motion, you should include the recommendations from the April 6 memo.
Yep, I, I do have that, and that was, that was intended to read it, but that's a good summary, thank you. So first, David or Chris, do you want to respond to the, the, the input that Laurie had just read from one of the others?
Sure, so I'm very familiar with that address and, and the site, and their driveway has been dug up at least once, maybe even twice. So the intention is for us to replace the end of their driveway to create a, an apron effect. We're going to take it back well beyond the work zone area and replace that end of the driveway, and we'll build it to standard. We don't intend on being in the roadway, so the roadway concerns are really not relevant, but I am aware of the amount of work that has been done on the end of the driveway, and it is very patchy on their driveway, and we will replace the end of it.
Okay, thank you. And then as Town Manager had referenced, there's a letter dated April 6th from John Brigazzi, Town Engineer, and with additional requirements and recommendations for work being done on, on those streets. Are you familiar with that letter? Have you received that letter, and are you compliant or would you comply with that letter?
I have, and we've done multiple projects in the, in the town, and we will, we have in the past followed that letter, and it's, we're meeting with the residents on a Tuesday night at 5 o'clock or thereafter, explaining the entire project, meeting with the contractors, providing names and phone numbers for the contractors doing the work. The contractor we have that's doing this work is EJ Electric, and they've done work in town previously, and the engineering department is familiar with them, and I think if people reach out to them, they'll find they're very happy with the work they've done. They work very closely with the homeowners. If there's an issue, they're out there right away to make any kind of repairs that they, they request, and we've instructed them to work with the homeowners to, to meet the needs of, you know, the impact of the construction and on their, near their properties.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, one, one more comment was just sent in by that same a butter. Just wondering if outages are two to three hours? Can't they schedule it for off-hours and not wait to do the outage? With proper notice and planning for least interruptions to residents?
So we'd have to identify what off-hours would actually be, because some people's off-hours or other people's on-hours, so, you know, that's a, kind of this subjective comment.
Yep. I, I, I can speak to a little bit. I mean, we've, I've done a lot of these projects and I've done outages, I've done outages at night. Some people like to have the outages at night, but some people don't, because then, then they're trying to wake up in the morning and they're all, our alarm clocks are off, and it's a disturbance for them. So you're right, there's, there's off-hours is very difficult to deal with. We, we try to do our outages between like 10 o'clock and then, and 2 o'clock in the afternoon, and usually they're even shorter than that. In the middle of the day, I realize there's a lot of people home, but, you know, we try to be as, as understanding as possible. If, if, if the board wants us to do it at night, I'm not against doing it at night. We can do that. But, you know, it's hard to make everybody happy, but I'm, I'm glad to do whatever you suggest.
Okay. Anything else, Laurie?
Uh, nope.
All right, well, thank you for monitoring that for us. Okay, any further comment from the board? Okay, so no other input. So I'm going to ask to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, moved at the Board of Selectmen, close the public hearings to receive comments on regarding National Grid, Quail Run and Montero Way, roll call.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Rosemary, how do you vote?
Rosemary Smedele, aye.
Phil DiColigero, aye.
Regina Keane, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
And Richard Valencourt, aye. Okay, so we've closed the public hearing. We're going to move on to new business. The first item under new business, a vote to, to vote on the request of the National Grid petition for Quail Run and Montero, Montero Way. So what does the board, what would the board like to do?
Mr. Chair, Rosemary Smedele, moved the Board of Selectmen approve the National Grid petition, 16443967 for pole conduit work on Quail One Lane and Montero Way as presented.
Chris Nobley, second.
Okay, are we gonna, do we have conditions on this? I think we may have spoken about a couple of conditions, one being that we respect the letter of the Town Engineer, and then we had a couple other requests that we do the transfer, the cut over later in the year or at some type of an off-hour. I think maybe National Grid meets with the neighbors, they can agree or try to get to a time when everyone would be amicable to having this done. So I'd like to ask if we could amend the petition, amend the, amend the motion with some conditions.
Mr. Chair, I accept your friendly amendment.
Okay, we have a second on that?
Regina Keane, second.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second for approval with conditions of the petition for National Grid. So let's see, how do we vote? Rosemary Smedele?
Rosemary Smedele, aye.
Phil DiColigero, aye.
Regina Keane, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
And Richard Valencourt, aye. Okay, we're all set. Thank you, Chris and Dave, for joining us tonight. And thank you. Okay, next under new business, we'll have, we're going to have a discussion on our upcoming town meeting and a possible vote to change the time from 6:00 our time to 5:00 our time. So I'd like to first go to the Town Manager and hear your thoughts on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I believe we are also joined by our Town Moderator. We did have a meeting this last week. The days are all a blur at this point. I believe it was this last week where we talked about town meeting and the possibility of it being held outside. And if it is held outside, and I'm sure the moderator would love to expunge on this more, one of the things that, that we talked about as our group, and so it was the two of us, the Town Clerk, the Director of Ministry of Services, and the Board of Health Director, as well as IT, and one of the things that we talked about was that if we did hold it outside, lighting could be an issue, and if we started at 6:00 and it's still getting dark around 8:00 o'clock, that could be problematic, and so we're here tonight to talk to you a little bit about the plan for town meeting, as well as ask for you to vote to change the time. And I'm happy, Mr. Chair, if it is your will to turn it over to the moderator to speak on it a little further.
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Moderator, for joining us tonight, and we'd love to hear your input
Thank you all, much appreciated. We did have a great meeting with all the people that Melissa was just noting, and we talked about three things. Number one, site. Number two, safety. Number three was operations and legitimacy of the meeting. In terms of, in terms of, of venue, we talked about having a dispersed meeting in the high school, the notion of a drive-in type movie, a drive-in movie type meeting, excuse me. And lastly, having as regular order of town meeting as possible, but doing it outside on the football field in the Joseph Falls Stadium. Nice to say those words. In any circumstance, there was a strong consensus that it be outdoors as a matter of safety, that the Board of Health, through the, through the agent, Brian LaGrasse, who's a wonderful contributor, clearly affirmed. Secondly, that the stadium afforded us the most flexibility, both in terms of breadth and availability of seating, but the ability to bring technology onto the site, mostly audio and the like. So that brings us to the second question relative to operations of the meeting. And we did raise the specific question about site and, and evening time, dusk into evening time. There is the universal question about mosquitoes that we've not addressed specifically, although those of us who have regularly attended high school graduation ceremonies, I have not found that to be a problem, nor is the sun setting in an inappropriate way for us. The one other notion, other than moving it to an earlier time in order to ensure that we can get the full meeting as safe and as appropriate as necessary, that has the legitimacy of feeling and acting and looking like the conduct of our regular meeting with as few changes as possible other than that we're sitting alfresco, is the notion of perhaps changing the meeting to a daytime meeting on a Saturday. I'm agnostic about either of those scenarios, but do believe there is a true warrant for at minimum moving the meeting time back to 5:00 PM. As to dealing with weather issues, the moderator, as you know, has the unilateral authority to move the meeting to another date, assuming that there is a weather and/or public health interest. So we'll have some rain dates built in. Lastly, I'll only share with you that our technical group met with one of our vendors as well last Friday, and we are meeting on-site on Thursday. All are welcome if you wish, wear your masks, keep appropriate physical distancing, and we'll be going over some of the operational detail. I feel quite comfortable that we can have a safe meeting and that it will be legitimate in terms of people believing that we can put safe protocols in place, as well as have the meeting act in as most deliberate form as we've had in, no matter where, we've enjoyed our meeting in the past.
Mr. Chair, Rosemary Smedele?
Yes.
Thank, thank you for that summary, Mr. Moderator. My concern is this, and, and I don't disagree with the Board of Health, their concern for the safety of the public, but my concern is this, this is a very important meeting to our seniors with the senior center on the warrant, and my concern is that that might not be the best location for them, and with the heat, the weather, maybe having to get off the field quickly if a thunderstorm or something pops up, is there any way that we can consider maybe having them also social distance in the auditorium with proper cameras and sound, so forth and so on? I would hate to have the seniors feel as though that this, this setting is not really good for them and not come with such an important meeting, and then feeling somewhat disenfranchised by this location.
Well, while that is absolutely something that could be conducted, we have round advisory from public health authorities in the state and our own local public health authorities that we should stay away from an indoor meeting, no matter the level of physical distancing, and to particularly subject our most vulnerable population and demographic to a place that might be more comfortable but is less, less safe is not something that I can endorse.
So you're comfortable with the fact that it will be difficult for them to attend this meeting with such an important vote?
I don't believe that at all. I don't believe that it will be uncomfortable. We have, if you, as I know, Rosemary, you've been to plenty of, of high school graduations. We have lots of proud grandparents at high school graduations, and it will be actually quite similar to that kind of an arrangement. And if, in fact, we need to have a meeting, that's an entirely different choice. But if, in fact, we have a need for a meeting, it is clearly the consensus of all involved that an outdoor meeting in that site on as early a time as reasonably possible is most appropriate. I would suggest that I'll unilaterally, if the selectmen choose not to do this, is that I'll reorder the, the manner in which warrant articles come up, and we should jointly establish a hierarchy of those so that those people who feel that they can't sit for an hour or two, or perhaps even as long as three at a town meeting, can dispatch with business that's most important to the community as early as possible in our, in our meeting. So that's one, that's one way we could mitigate it. Obviously open to any others. We will have separate entrances for those with disabilities, so they don't have to walk stairs. They can stay on level ground with special parking so that level ground is available to them and have the shortest distance possible in order to get to a properly physically distanced seat.
Mr. Moderator, what about setting a, a stop time, so to speak, for a meeting and, and potentially having it continue over multiple nights? So let's say that we said, we start at five and we say we have a stop time of 7:30, so we, we don't have to worry about the dark and we don't have to worry about, you know, then having people leaving in the dark, or we don't have to worry so much about bugs coming up because they don't usually come out until after dark. You know, maybe we conduct some of the business and then continue on a different night, maybe even just the next night, and conclude the business, but at an earlier time so that we can both get, you know, start and get out of there a little bit earlier to avoid those potential risks of leaving in the dark.
Much appreciated, we've discussed that, and I would concur with you that we ought not to be conducting business, if at all possible, in an absolute darkness circumstance, but in a dusk play, I'm not at all concerned. We have proper lighting on the field and we have more than sufficient lighting in the parking lot areas, and as the town manager noted in our meeting, we have the ability to bring in augmented or supplementary lighting as well, if in fact that's going to be the case. My one thought about, about the meeting is that I wouldn't expect this meeting to go any longer than what our usual meetings would go in a normal environment, and I would think that there would be some interest in, by all parties, to make this a properly deliberative but as efficiently speedy meeting as appropriate. The town manager is doing an excellent job right now in conjunction with her technical staff and, and NACAM and others in getting information out about each article. It would be our intent to continue the, the on-the-warrant type primers that we've been doing in the past and highly likely expand them, so have a, a real flood of information to folks so that people can come as readily prepared and as knowledgeable as appropriate.
Mark, I, I think that's very helpful. Two things here that, that kind of come to mind. The sixteenth is almost the summer solstice, so we're close to the longest day of the year, which means eight thirty is about when sun will set, so we have a pretty big window, just as an aside. I was also thinking, though, as you and, and Rosemary were talking about accessibility, would it make sense to consider an area that is set up more convenient for seniors? More accessible, lower to the ground, all, all that sort of thing, create a section for folks who might feel more comfortable sitting there?
Totally appreciate it, and one of the things that I've been reflecting on is the possibility of having a smaller tented area exclusively for those people who might have a medical need, a real interest for being in that space. So I'm entirely open to that kind of a circumstance, but I, I don't want it to turn into preferred seating, if you will, for those people who are more able, like, like you and me. So we'd have to have some standard in terms of being able to utilize that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. One-to-one community out west actually has a, a tented building, like in a, in a camp in the Berkshires, that can hold, you know, 200 people socially distanced. It's pretty large, about the size of two NBA basketball courts. That's not a luxury that we have right now, but that at least would provide the open air flow, which is very, very clearly the public health officials are, are requiring of us, and would much prefer, in addition to the protocols of being masked at all times, perhaps other than the circumstance in which one is speaking to the meeting.
Mr. Moderator, I know that you've already heard this, but if the chair would allow me just to speak on the need. So we have been doing a little bit of due diligence, obviously, as we're moving towards town meeting, and a 1/12 budget, which is what we would have to go to if we do not have a town meeting by June 30th, is rather problematic for us for two reasons. One, we actually have three pay periods in July, more than 1/12, unfortunately, and so we would have issues with, with paying our employees. Secondarily, we have a lot of items that we prepay in advance in order to receive a discount, and those are due in July, and so we would have budgetary impacts due to not having that town meeting by June 30th. The, I will say that we have, I have a meeting tomorrow with the executive director of the GIC to see if there's any way that he, of the GIC, would agree to move our payments off, and we're still waiting to hear, and there are time and, which I believe is meeting the 26th, to make a same determination, and that would help. We're also asking for guidance from the Division of Local Services on whether or not the 1/12 budget needs to be handled as 1/12 of the individual cost centers budget, or is it 1/12 of the entire budget we can spend kind of discretionally? It doesn't sound like that, unfortunately, is the case, but we are waiting to hear that back, and that would help as well. But there are some preliminary concerns that we have at this point about the 1/12 budget, and so I just wanted to share that, thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Rosemary Smedele again. So what would be your alternative rain date? I would hope that that would be, keep in mind what the town manager has just stated that we need to do it quickly.
Clearly, we'll have chairs and technology in the ready at the stadium, so the preference would be utilizing at the very next night in order to keep both expense down and set up less difficult. The alternative, if we have a stint of rain and we choose to trust the meteorologists, then we can, you know, schedule at a, at a time when we anticipate more, in a more appropriate weather. Maybe we can get Barry Burbank to act as the official meteorologist for the town of North Andover and its town meeting.
Well, we'd have to bring him back out of retirement, he just retired, but I have the same thought, he, he's our best weatherman in town.
Well, Rosemary, let's you and I appeal to him for this honorary job.
He's a good guy.
Yes.
So I, I do agree with the town manager that what, if we go past the date that, that would cause all these problems, that would really be problematic. So I think we really need to bear in mind of, as you said, perhaps just doing it the very next night. And I also agree with you, and I would have made the motion to move out of order at the quickest possible reasonable moment for the senior center project to be presented and heard and voted on in the event that it's very hot or very uncomfortable. It is, it's the times we're in. I'm not criticizing the board of health or you and your outdoor decision, but I, I am concerned, I did speak to some people on the council of aging, and they're also concerned. So unfortunately, it's the times that we're in, so we're all, gonna all have to do the best we can with it. But I think it's very important, though, that we attend to their business as quickly as possible. Or the people's business, but with a highlight on interest of the seniors in town.
I think just, okay, the heat, I think June 16th, we're still early enough in the season. I think more concerned about the, the cold at night, but than the heat. So I think, you know, I think the temperature, other than that, you know, my biggest concern would be the rain, but I think, you know, heat-wise, I don't think would be too bad. I'm, I'm not going wood on that one, but I think we should be okay.
That would be great, and so, sweater weather.
We know Barry Burbank, so I can't give you that for sure.
He didn't expect his name to be brought up at all in this meeting. I hope you're watching, Barry. I do, I, I'm keenly interested in working with the board of selectmen and other petitioners in putting a hierarchy together of the most important items. If we're gonna have a town meeting, and it could be, many other communities are considering having very limited town meetings, two or three articles. My own opinion is that if we're gonna have a town meeting that is safe, then we're gonna have a safe town meeting. And whether we're there for half an hour or two and a half, two and a half hours, it needs to be safe through the entire time that we're together, so we may as well address the town's business in as full of manner as we can. But I will concede that we should absolutely establish a priority of articles.
Okay, very good. Any other comments from the board? Okay, so before us tonight, we don't actually have a, a vote on the format of the town meeting, we just have a vote on the time, time change from 5:00 PM to 6:00 PM to allow for an earlier town meeting. So I'll hear a motion for that request.
Move the board of selectmen change the time of the town meeting on June 16th, 2020, at 6:00 PM to June 16th, 2020, to 5:00 PM.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We'll take a roll call vote, we'll start with Selectmen Smedele.
Rosemary Smedele, aye.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Regina Keane, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
And Richard Valencourt is a yes as well. Okay, so we will have our meeting starting at five o'clock on, hopefully on June 16th. Mr. Moderator, thank you for your time tonight, and I know you have a lot of work ahead of you getting this all prepared, and thank you for those efforts.
My pleasure, it's a wonderful team that the entire community and, and town government puts together, and I'm deeply appreciative of being a part of it. All the best, I'll watch you guys for the rest of the night on television.
All right, well, thank you, sir. Bye.
Mr. Chair, would the board consider discussing item E, the TIF, before we do the town meeting warrant article recommendation, since you will be voting on those, on that item?
Sure, so I will take my chairman's prerogative and I'll move out of order, item E, to be discussed next, the discussion of the potential vote regarding Amazon TIF and community partnership agreement. And town manager, I'll turn that one over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I am joined by the director of economic development, Andrew Shapiro, as well as town council Suzanne Egan, who have been working very hard on these agreements over the last few weeks, and I very much appreciate that. So we did send for your review both the tax increment financing agreement that has been negotiated with Amazon in Hillwood, as well as the community partnership term sheet that is being used as the basis for the development agreement. As you know from our last meeting, the TIF agreement is for a 10-year period with the maximum anticipated exemption to Amazon of $27.3 million, and anticipated revenue to the town of $18.2 million in real estate property taxes. The TIF agreement does not apply to personal property. We are still trying to make a determination on what that personal property will look like, but it is not included in this TIF agreement and will be additional income to the town. The agreement also provides for a third-party appraisal of the property every three years, which corresponds to our evaluation cycle, in order to come to an agreed-upon assessed value of the property, which is very beneficial to the community moving forward. The community partnership term sheet has not changed either, it is what we discussed at the last meeting as well. It is $2.3 million towards the Osgood Sewer Project, one-third of the project, $100,000 for a traffic mitigation study after construction, $100,000 for traffic mitigation equipment for the town, $3 million total over the term of the TIF for STEM and STEAM programming for the schools, $100,000 for technology for youth services and the library, $700,000 over a four-year period for street, tree planting and management, $100,000 for technology and furniture for the senior center, and $264,034 in fire safety. The term sheet also memorializes the developers' intention to pay for improvements in infrastructure along Osgood Street in the approximate value of $2 million. And so there's really no surprises, nothing new here. It's just memorializing what we did bring to you a few weeks ago, and I will add, and we've kind of been in a, a race with another project that I believe that we won, we are the first community to enter into a development agreement with Amazon.
Well, that's great, thank you for that summary. Any, oh, Attorney Egan, do you have anything you would like to add to the town manager's comments?
Um, no, I think that the town manager summarized the agreements.
Mr. Chairman, I just, I wanted to hone in on the final comment that the town manager just made, and ask her to elaborate, because we, we brushed, we touched upon this at a prior meeting, but I don't know that the significance of what you just said is truly understood, especially because we're not in person. You said that we were in a race to be the first community to enter into a development agreement with Amazon. Explain why that's significant.
So typically, when you enter into, when you have a, a company come to town, you do try to, to garnish some benefit that goes along with the burden that comes with new development. You don't always accomplish that, right? And in this case, right, we were negotiating a TIF, which was gonna be requiring us to not only get new tax revenue, but also give up something as well. And if you remember correctly, both Fall Liver and Free Town have had Amazon come to town and have given TIFs in both of those instances that are, are much, I think, richer than the TIF that we have negotiated, without getting all of the community benefits that the town has also negotiated in this instance. And so not only are we getting tax income, but we're also getting community benefits above and beyond those taxes because of a new development that's coming to town, and I think that we should be really proud of that.
And I, I personally, and I think even generally as a board, we would all agree, I appreciate your effort, but I think that that was, the emphasis, I think, is important. Amazon doesn't typically negotiate, Amazon doesn't. In fact, again, we are the first community, they do not negotiate and give extras away beyond the expected tax payments, and so the fact that we got not just some, but, I mean, just $3 million in STEM alone is pretty substantial, so, thank you. Thank you for the.
The team effort, very much a team effort.
And I think the other thing that we should emphasize, too, is, you know, yes, the amount of the incentives would be equal 27 million to Amazon, but they're also giving back 18 million in the, the community agreements. So the net of that is, you know, 10 million.
Mr. Chairman, can you, so we're getting 18 million in taxes in addition to community agreements?
We're getting 18 million in taxes in addition to the community benefits that we're receiving, and so that's.
And that's over 10 years.
Over 10 years, and then don't forget that Amazon has a 15-year lease, and that we've negotiated a TIF that is only 10 years, and so for that last five years, they will be paying the full tax amount. So it's, you know, that's.
What is the approximate value of the town incentives that we would be getting? What is the approximate value of the town incentives that we would be getting? Do we have an approximate value of those?
We did. Let's see, seven. It's about nine million dollars.
And all
And that includes the street infrastructure work.
All of that is one time payments, correct? Are they, is the veterans portion something that they're committed to giving each year?
Yeah, so they they also have agreed to do things that don't currently have a value attached to them. So for instance, they're going to be doing a veterans um job fair every year for the life of the TIF. Which which I think is is fabulous. They're doing things like um to to reduce their um impact, they're going to be giving bus passes and making sure that they have bike racks and they're gonna be entering the Merrimack Valley Transit Authority Group. Um and so there's a lot of other things that they're gonna be doing as well on top of the the financial benefits. Um the development agreement also lays out how the construction will work and how truck traffic will work and how we'll negotiate those types of items that are really a big benefit to the town. It mandates us to have weekly construction meetings. It requires them to have a trailer on site for our inspectors, um and so that our inspectors are there being able to um quickly deal with issues as they come up, not that we anticipate any. Um and so it it really does memorialize a lot of different things, not just funding, but how this project will be built and the protections that are in place because of that. And it should be added that it also does not bind um the planning board or the Z B A in any way. So um if they have additional restrictions that they want to put in place that maybe we didn't think of about truck safety or about construction, um they're also, they're still able to do that.
Okay, sorry.
Madam Town Manager, Rosemary Medley, the thing that I like a lot about this agreement, they touched upon various groups in town. And in frankly, it's contributed to the quality of life of those groups and of the town um between educational programs for kids, the youth center, uh youth services with the library and technology, the senior center, the veterans, um you know, traffic mitigation, the tree planting, which of course is a quality of life thing for a lot of people because not only is it aesthetically pleasing, but it's also good, good for the environment and in our clean air. Um I really very happy that we've touched upon so many of those. Um really, again, good, excellent quality of life issues for uh the people of North Andover, along with a pretty substantial um bit of money coming into the general fund. I think it's a good TIF.
Yeah, great. I agree. Um I I did want to give um our Economic Development Director a chance to speak. Andrew, I didn't didn't recognize you earlier um before we, and I will hear additional Board of Selectmen comments, but I did want to give you a chance if you had anything you wanted to add, what's already been said.
Uh thanks, Mr. Chairman. And no, I don't have anything additional to add. I think our Town Manager covered it all. I and I would just echo her sentiment that it was a team effort uh to get this done, and we really appreciate the uh all the support we've gotten throughout the process.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I was I was hoping to ask for for the Town Manager if she had details about any state TIF type programs that Amazon may be applying for, Hillwood may be applying for, um specifically with the Economic Assistance Coordinating Council, right? Because that's a group that in the past, and perhaps either Andrew or Melissa, if either of you have information on on what, if any, asks they're making of the Commonwealth.
So they um will have to go before um the organization to have the TIF approved, but they are not, and Andrew, you can correct me if I'm wrong, or you have any more updated information. But the information that we understand is that they are not going before the state for any other tax breaks or incentives. Um the only other funding that they really had requested as a partner with us was the two point three million dollars and the Mass Works money for the sewer, and that was is the extent of the state's contribution. Andrew, you can correct me if you know anything more than I might know.
No, you're correct. They're not seeking any state tax credits to the E A C C. But you are correct that they do need to seek E A C C approval for this local TIF.
Meaning that the that council has to approve whatever it is that we have approved as a town meeting.
That that's correct.
So the only tax break that they're seeking is from the municipality, not from the Commonwealth at all.
Correct.
Yes.
But I I guess for me, I'm I'm happy that we're pulling in um over the course of a decade eighteen million dollars just in straight tax revenue that we otherwise wouldn't be pulling in and that we've managed to extract, as you said, approximately nine million dollars in an agreement that um is arguably unprecedented, because that's not something that Amazon typically does. But I will say I'm I'm disappointed because at different points during the process last year was represented that this project and by the developers, that this would be a project that would generate X number of dollars per year. And I'm pretty sure that it was um at the lowest three point five to five million dollars in estimates. And this, of course, you know, brings us substantially beneath that. Um now that being said, I I'm also a realist about that location. I don't think that that's a location that I mean, we strived as a Board of Selectmen, especially this Board of Selectmen, to find an appropriate tenant for it. Um I'm glad that this though is the decision that is up to the town meeting. I mean, I will vote in favor, I'll vote in favor for favorable recommended recommendation tonight. Um but again, I think it's an appropriate discussion for the town as a whole to be able to have and to decide whether or not that type of um break, tax increment financing, correct? That what type of break Amazon would be getting. I I think that that's completely fair for the community to weigh in after the discussion we had last June. So that's not at all a statement about any of our town staff. It's more just a I wish that they had been more upfront about what their initial intentions were, and certainly I wish that the um estimates for potential tax revenue that they would discuss as far as property tax revenue goes. I I wish that they had been more um in line with what they were intending to agree to with us.
Wait, what, I'm sorry. I was trying to write down what you said to make sure I heard you correctly. What were you saying that they said last year about three point
Five five million?
When we had regular conversations um as a planning board of Board of Selectmen at town meeting, when we discussed the projected revenue, um when the Finance Committee got up at town meeting and talked about the potential and, you know, revenue that we would be getting. So it's discussed as um an estimate, of course, because you have to be able to assess the property. Um but that it was in the ballpark of three point five to five million dollars and so per year.
Wasn't that for building permits? Oh, wasn't that
I guess, I guess, in fairness, it was perhaps interchangeable. I did try to go back and watch um different meetings that we had, planning board meeting had, the planning board meeting we had, and also the discussion that we had at town meeting. And again, for me, I I look at this as it's still eighteen million dollars in a property that is so underutilized at the moment. So I don't I don't have a problem with that, but I feel that as a discussion, you know, we we did talk about, you know, are you asking for tax breaks? And I know that that's a that's a um more casual way to describe a TIF, but um that is what a TIF is. It's a tax break. Um and that was never the case. And so I I guess I'm I'm disappointed. Now, again, of course, the economic situation of our community and the globe has changed. And so the fact that we still have this as an opportunity right now, I mean, it's again, how many bites do we have at the apple to try to fill this particular location? And I don't think that the economy isn't such that, you know, we're likely to get something that isn't Amazon in that facility paying anywhere near to what we would be getting with this TIF. Um but I also think that it's a fair conversation to have. And it's a conversation that that we and certainly I myself am preparing to have with neighbors, residents in a town meeting about, hey, you know, when we last had this discussion, we talked about, you know, what this meant as far as value to our tax base and the final value, if we approve this TIF, is lower than what was discussed by both sides at last June and and the room up to last June's town meeting.
We have discussed this hurdle with them, um because I too have seen the articles and the statements. Um and we've had Suzanne, Andrew and I have had very candid conversations with Amazon and Hillwood about the, I think, um hurdles that we are going to have to overcome at town meeting based on um anticipated pa- or understood past statements. Um and they do recognize that. I will say that one of the struggles that we are going to have, I believe, is that um Amazon is not approved for travel right now. And so we we likely will not have a representative of Amazon in person at town meeting. We can call them in and, you know, try to project, since you won't have screens really either, try to project them through the uh microphone, um but it is, it is a struggle that we will have, um unfortunately.
Well, I think that
Will they have local representation? I know Hillwood has some local attorneys. Will they have local representation that can join?
They, so they will have, um Hillwood will, I think, likely have representation, but Am- Amazon's represented separately um as a third party, and they they do not anticipate that they will be able to travel here.
So we as a board are meeting right now remotely. I mean, surely there must be a way that we could patch in somebody, you know, the the value of this is twenty seven million dollars to them.
No, they're willing to come virtually. I I think the the issue is that um there's an anticipation that we may not have screens at town meeting. Um I think, right? So um we may be able to patch him in as like the, you know, an Oz type voice. Yes, that will come across town meeting. Um but they they have been very candid that they do not have authority to travel right now, and so we will not have anyone in person.
So it's a technical hurdle that we'll have to overcome, and I think we'll be able to figure it out.
We will. We certainly will.
Um again, I I think it's, I think even though as far as the conversation, I do think that's a very much internal conversation too, right? You know, we as a town have to say, okay, here's the actual real value based on estimates um on what will happen as a as improvements progress at that site. Um is eighteen million dollars over ten years? Uh because that's, that doesn't, correct me, that doesn't div- divide up equally over those ten years. We're not looking at one point eight. It's a, it's a
Correct. It starts low.
Twenty percent near one and yeah.
Um and I mean, so for for me, I look at it as, you know, it's a, it's a town discussion where, you know, basically, do we as a community recognize that this is something that we want at that space and at this value? And yes, there's always a potential, the hope that we can collect more, and we can certainly talk about, well, gee, last year, we didn't think that was going to be the case. Um I don't know many people who would have said that they wouldn't have rezoned the site if they thought that we could get eighteen million dollars over ten years. Um and certainly those people would, it would be their prerogative to vote no at at this town meeting if they didn't want to give that type of benefit then to Amazon. But um I'm glad that you've made it clear that as a community, because it's not something they're accustomed to coming to town meetings, that we as a community may not be that there's gonna be a discussion about it. Um I personally, like I said, I there were ample opportunities for them to have these discussions. Quite a number of articles where it was discussed, again, where we talked about projected revenue um to artificially deflate that number that they also discussed, you know, less than a year ago. Yeah, it's too bad.
But I think
It is a change, and it's different from what was presented at the time. We have no doubt about it. You know, and and you know, we're in a place now where, as you said, you know, how many more opportunities are we gonna have to get something really transformational at that location? Um and coming in, you know, with eighteen million dollars in taxes over ten years that we, you know, for the last how many years has that facility sat empty, at least fourteen years, that that facility sat empty, pretty much empty without any taxes there or collecting much at all from that facility. So yes, it's unfortunate. Um but, you know, we need to explore and make sure that we're we're not leaving any opportunities on the off the table, taking any opportunities off the table that um may not come around again. So I think, ye- yes, you're right. This is a conversation we're definitely gonna have at town meeting, and I know there's gonna be a lot of pushback on it. Um but, you know, we're we're dealing with a a company that, you know, wants to make a really a transformational um or make that a transformational location. So I think we will hear him out.
I I think, Mr. Chairman, you are, you're right. And if they had come to town meeting too last year with the package that we're going to be bringing to town meeting tonight, I think that it would have been approved favorably. I think the the conversation is just more um the evolution of that dollar amount um against the community, right? But as far as just taking the package on its own, I mean, it's transformational regardless for North Andover. And um I think that we as a as individuals, as a board and as a community, it's those two separate discussions, right? Because I I think last year, I remember there was a gentleman, Mr. Glenn Johnson, who approached the microphone um and said, you know, when you consider the size of Amazon and the the wealth that they have at their disposal, we should be trying to get more than even what was being discussed clearly pre-TIF. Um again, it's a very, you know, sensitive area, that that loosened site, and you know, we've tried really hard to get it filled and and back on the tax rolls in a as productive as a way as possible. Um and I think if this were the package, again, that had been proposed last year, the town would have been favorable anyways. The discussion more is going to be about, you know, the evolution. So um that's why I appreciate the work that you've done, Madam Town Manager, and to Andrew as well from the Economic Development Department. I mean, both of you. Um I'm excited about this and what this means regardless for town, if we can approve this.
It's important to remember, too, this is just the property tax, right? There's other that the
The personal property.
Personal prop, yeah. Sorry, I I'm just saying that there's additional tax revenue. I mean, I didn't pull up my notes from um the meetings last year. I guess I should have, to remind myself, but I mean, they, if you take the full picture, um maybe we'll, it would be more in line with what they said last year, right? We're only talking about a portion of the picture.
Right. And the personal property taxes kind of go in the opposite direction of the TIF, right? TIP, personal property taxes tend to actually depreciate because the value of equipment depreciates, and so we may see that as an offset. And Andrew is reminding me that, you know, the better conversation is that we're not gonna receive eighteen million dollars over ten years. We're gonna receive forty one million dollars over fifteen years, right? Because that TIF ends and they still have that lease. And I think that it's also really important to emphasize um that Andrew and Suzanne have developed a website um that we will go live with tomorrow morning um that explains the TIF, explains what a TIF is, has all of the documents, talks about the Amazon project, and it's gonna be a really great informational, educational tool um that they have ready to go uh as soon as we um we get the okay from you. So that's really good news as well.
Madam Town Manager, Rosemary Medley, the other thing that we're not talking about is especially right now with so many people out of work is the economic engine that this will bring to the community with jobs and with our merchants who have suffered so greatly um between the Columbia Gas and now the COVID that it's people into the community who will be looking to buy lunch, go to the drugstores, um maybe get their car fixed, uh do some shopping, um you know, on their lunch break or whatever. So there's a huge economic engine that, again, will will assist the town in in building up the economy after this uh terrible patch that we're, the whole country's in. So that's, you know, not only is it good financially, but it um I think it gives people hope and something to look forward to as everyone's trying to recover from this pandemic and all that it has brought to the the communities in this country and particularly in North Andover after we just got slammed with the Columbia jet gas, just just reviving, and here we go. Um so there's a lot, there's a lot that's not in the TIF that has tremendous economic and social values for the community as well. So I I I think um I think it's it's a a good TIF, it's a reasonable TIF, and um and over the the long haul, it's quite a bit of money.
I I agree with the the comments you just made. Uh sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. Were you
No, I was done. Thank you.
Um just, I I mean, I'm prepared to support this tonight. Um but just to play devil's advocate, and I know there's potentially people out there who would ask, what is the need to uh finalize this now in this town meeting versus a delay? Like, is Amazon not going to break ground until this is signed? Um maybe you can comment a little bit on the timing and why we would not want to delay this.
We certainly don't want to delay it because Amazon ha- has told us that we're still competing um as a project and that they have other projects. The way they once described it to me is that they have walls of, a wall of projects um that are all competing, and the projects that end up being the most attractive financially are the ones that end up moving forward. Um and they're um in many ways, I think, waiting on us for closing. Um they're already having conversations down there about demolition, but they certainly are not having any construction conversations yet. They're close to um finalizing their planning board process. Um but I I I continue, and I I say it to to anyone who will listen, is that, you know, in no way, shape or form do I think that Amazon is a sure thing. Um I think getting the TIF passed and getting the um development agreement signed helps make it closer to being a sure thing, but they tell us that we're still competing for the project. Um Andrew and Suzanne, you know, Suzanne, you've had the most conversations um of anybody lately with them. I don't know if you have anything to add on that.
Um yes, it's my understanding that the they are getting close to a closing um a closing date, but that they are very anxious to have this resolved. Um and it hasn't been said particularly to me, but it is my understanding that this is contin- you know, one of the conditions that they're looking for completing prior to that closing occurring. And then once the, once the closing um takes place, then everything falls, so, you know, everything And then once, once the closing um takes place, then everything falls, so you know, everything moves forward from there.
Yeah, and maybe um, would you know, I can spin it around. What would be the benefit of waiting? Um, moving on this and, and having another special town meeting to decide it.
I, I mean, I agree. I'm ready for it. I just, I feel like we should be prepared for any question that the public's going to have. And I could imagine that with um all the impacts of COVID nineteen on our potential um, on our budget and, you know, whatever, that someone might say, well, wait, why don't we hold off on this? Because we don't know what the financial picture is. I, I, I think, I, I appreciate very much what Selectman Spadili said, which is this is going to be part of an engine that helps us recover and not just the town, but all the small businesses in the town. So for me, that's a very good answer for why we would not want to delay this a, a day. Although the, the best answer, I guess, is, yeah, they're Amazon and they have a wall of projects. And I, I can completely, um, I believe every bit of that, that they are, they have a bunch of bunch of things in flight and they're going to go with the one that is the most attractive and um financially, you know, beneficial for them and is ready to go and is easy. So.
And I can't think of any negative impacts to our budget for this. If we go forward with the tip, um, maybe someone can enlighten me, but are there any negative impacts um going forward?
No, I guess I meant the thought that we could get more or, I don't know. Just trying to get a devil's advocate.
And, and isn't this really, when you put it all together, we're talking about what the TIF gives away, but really the other side of that coin is what we're getting from the TIF. And I think that's the part that uh both Rosemary and Regina are picking up on, which is the flip side of the TIF is that there's uh this flow of revenue that we're guaranteed. We know what that's going to look like. We have these added components plus all these other things that help booster and strengthen our, our community. So I, I would like to look at that as that's the two sides of the tip, which is if we only talk about it in terms of what's being surrendered, we really miss on what we're getting from that negotiation.
Yeah, that's a good point. Good to keep that in mind. And I think as um the town manager has said, there'll be a comprehensive package that will be put together that will be uh reviewable well in advance of town meeting uh from multiple uh media outlets as well as um, you know, uh you even talked about having a town hall meeting where people can call in and ask questions. So we'll try to get, you know, as much of the information out as possible about what the TIF is and, and what it will bring to the town. So that's important that we have that, that communication going. Um, okay, so any other comments before we move to evoke? Okay, then I will hear a motion on um, on this TIF agreement.
We believe we have um motion drafted that we may have sent to you after, correct, Laurie? I have so many documents open. I apologize. Hold on a minute.
Well, I received this.
There's a motion for the community agreement and then the TIF is covered in your recommendations for the town meeting warrant articles.
So this is Regina Keane. I will move that the Board of Selectmen approve the community partnership term sheet between the town of North Andover and Amazon dot com services LLC and Hillwood Enterprises LP, which shall be incorporated into the development agreement between the parties.
Second.
I'll second that, Rosemary Spadili.
Okay, we have a motion and Rosemary, I think Phil got the second in before you, so we've got a motion in a second. Uh, we'll move to a roll call vote. Um, Selectman Spadili?
Aye.
Selectman DeColigero, aye.
Regina Keane, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
And Richard Valencourt, aye. Okay, I believe we have to sign that, right? So we'll have to figure logistically how we can get everybody to sign that agreement. Is that true, Laurie?
Uh, Suzanne?
Yeah, so I can jump in. So that um, the community partnership term sheet is going to be incorporated into a development agreement and then you'll have to sign that, but that is not what is before you tonight to be signed.
Okay, all right.
Uh, make a process for that at a later point.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, let's um roll back. Um, so we're going to go through the town meeting warrant article recommendations. We have about one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, about nineteen articles that we still need to provide recommendations for. Um, some of them, one, two, three, four, five, six, six of them have not, the FinCon has decided to hold their recommendation until town meeting. And the last one, um, article thirty-one, I believe um is the TIF one, and I think w- we don't have a planning board recommendation yet on that one, as far as I know. But we can go through the others and um provide our recommendations. We'll nothing wrong.
We don't have a finance committee recommendation on the TIF yet because they're not hearing it to the twenty-sixth. Um, I just, we wanted to present it to you first.
Okay, great. Okay, so if we pull open the warrant article, um, the first article that we need to provide a recommendation for is Article Two, Authorization for Town Manager to Super and Superintendent or Superintendent of School Regarding Contacts in Excess of Three Years. Um, so there's actually two, three and four are all kind of administrative. I would suggest maybe we take those as a group grouping unless there's anybody that disagrees with that and would prefer to take them individually.
I think that's, that's efficient. Um, so, Mr. Chairman, I would motion favorable action on Articles Two, Three and Four as written and presented in our agenda and the warrant.
Regina Keane, I will second.
The motion in a second. Any discussion? Okay, well, the roll call votes. Selectman Spadili?
Rosemary Spadili, aye.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Regina Keane, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye. Okay, the next article that we need to take up is Article Twelve. Um, let me scroll down to that one. Article Twelve is the authorization of the Board of Selectmen to acquire a land at One and Three Sari Drive. Um, the planning board has recommended unfavorable action on Article Twelve.
Did you say unfavorable? It says in the thing favorable.
We have updated it. That was a typo. The planning board has, has recommended um unfavorable action um based on the conversation. They, they felt like they um did not understand, uh were not informed um that they were going to need to acquire this parcel.
Wait, I don't understand that. Uh, uh, help, help me understand. We've had, we had discussions on this. So is there something in that conversation that is, would be new information to us as a board that?
Yeah, I don't have any new, it's hard for me to explain. Um, I don't have any new information. Um, Jean Enright did bring them a list of times that we did talk about um the sale specifically since I've been here um as well as the website that we created um that did say that we needed to have um the land to go forward. Additionally, the, the site plan that was permitted showed the second lot. Um, so it, it's a, it's a difficult conversation um to have.
Melissa, can you clarify? So you said the site plan that was approved, meaning the site plan that they recommended favorable action for at town meeting? Was it last year or two years ago?
Right.
Showed this lot being part of the project.
Yes, but their, their, their um conversation, and I don't know if Andrew or Suzanne are still here and um want to weigh in either, but um their conversation pretty much was that they, they didn't understand that we were going to have to purchase that. Um, they didn't feel like that was made clear to them um during the process. And, you know, unfortunately, we can't um, we can't go back and do things differently than perhaps we did them in the past. Um, and are maybe more communicative or um better explain. Um, and it, it's hard to, it's hard to know, right? But um unfortunately, based on the fact pattern that they had and the discussion that they had, they deemed that they did not want to move forward with the acquisition.
Can I understand um a separation of roles section right here?
Let's take it one at a time.
We have a Board of Selectmen, we have a finance committee that's elected to, to advise on finances. Um, we have a planning board that is meant to advise us on land use. So they thought that that was an, an entirely appropriate use of that land to be part of the senior center project. They went before town meeting, they stood with us, they recommended. We have since come to understand that, well, we have to acquire that particular parcel of land for X number of dollars. So we're going to our town meeting to ask if they acquire it. Now, I understand because it's a land use that the board, the planning board has to weigh in um on a favorable or unfavorable action. But it seems like at this point it would just be a formality because the only adjustment is the cost. Can we afford it? Which is what the people of North Andover elect the Board of Selectmen and depend on the finance committee as appointed officials to advise on. But then, of course, every voter as a member of town meeting gets to weigh in one way or another. I guess for me, I, I am genuinely as a, as a resident shaken, so it was okay to use the land when they thought that we wouldn't have to pay for the land. But now that we have to pay for the land, it's not an appropriate use for that land?
Can I, can I respond to that? Just because I think that it's important to clarify one thing and that at the last, so the planning board saw the use of the two parcels throughout its site plan special permit review process. But if you recall, the site plan that was shown at the last town meeting, that lot was not included in.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I was gonna, yeah, yeah.
The special permit process and that site plan process is what the planning board has been reviewing for months. And that showed that lot, but that's different configuration than what was shown at the last town meeting.
Right, right. So, but so they issued a special permit for a project that assumed we would utilize that lot. So now they say, but we don't want to approve buying the lot. So do they want to go back with the whole new, like scratch that special permit and do a new one? Not using the lot? Or do they still want to keep that? They just don't want us to buy the lot. They want us to lease it or do something else. Does anybody have any inclination as to what their thought was there?
I, I think those are good questions, but I think it, it goes back to Selectman DeColigero's original comment. You know, they're weighing in on a financial, um, a financial question instead of a land use question. And really, we should have the, the um finance committee's recommendation here and, and the Board of Select, as a Board of Selectmen, and then the town of North Andover votes in. But I, I agree with Selectman DeColigero. This is a, this is a land use question and they're weighing in on behalf of a financial concern. And they're, and they're voting unfavorable because of a financial concern, it seems to be.
But Selectman Keane, your, your question though, I'm, I'm, I'm curious about that clarification as well. They, they approved the site plan review, right? Or they approved, that, excuse me, they approved, they approved the se- the special permit based on a site plan that included this lot, correct?
That is my understanding, right, Melissa?
Yes, that is correct.
So by, by us going through the process as a town and paying, right? Because part of this discussion has been about the expenses now moving forward and what have we incurred already as, as, as costs. Because this is not a private project, which would still be not okay, by the way. Um, but this is taxpayer money was used to lay out the plans throughout this process with the planning board, correct? Like, we, we paid to develop.
Yes, we, we paid, uh, we paid a, a designer to design the project um in its current form.
Based on their feedback about approving the special permit that included this lot, correct?
As well as construction documents, correct? And we've bid the project.
So had they not approved a special permit that included this site, we would not have incurred how much money and, and, and expenses associated with this project so far?
Okay, um, Lynn, are you on the call? I want to say that when we had this conversation a few weeks ago, we said it was, we've spent about four hundred fifty thousand, but I want to make sure I'm right.
Which would just.
Sorry, this is Lynn. Um, yes, there, it's about four fifty, five hundred thousand dollars.
So Lynn, just, just to make sure that, that my question, because I, I know, I, I want to make sure I'm wording it correctly. That amount, that four hundred fifty thousand dollars that, that Melissa, you just asked Lynn whether we've spent. We never would have spent that had they not a plan, had they not approved the special permit.
Well, I don't think we, Melissa, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
Different way. I should say we would have spent it in a different way.
Right, I don't think we would have moved forward with the, the design, would we have?
Certainly not. We may have done schematics, but we certainly wouldn't have gone forward to the extent that we have with construction documents um and the cost of bidding, et cetera.
So the planning board said yes to a site plan review and the town of North Andover spent money approximately four hundred fifty thousand dollars on developing a design based on that, that, that special permit, excuse me, I think I keep saying site plan review unintentionally. So we spent approximately four hundred fifty thousand dollars on a plan because they gave us a special permit. And then when the time came to actually procure that land to move forward with the project, which they approved, they said, oh, wait, no, never mind. Correct? That's a good way to sum it up.
Right, and so we've been meeting with the um architects um to determine what it, additional costs we would now incur, which we will, we will have soon um in order to redesign the project in a less attractive way. Because if you remember correctly, one of the reasons why we ended up deciding um to use the One and Three Sari Drive was because of the size of the parking spots that we wanted to have for seniors. The fact that we did not want to share parking spots with the apartment complex that's going in. And additionally, because it improved traffic flow, um, one of the issues was that they would be using the same throughway for entrance and exit. And we were concerned about seniors doing that. So we'll be spending money to design a less attractive project.
But the point is, we have to do that in the event that town meeting actually were to list, so town, our town government listened to the planning board when they gave us a special permit, went, designed a project that included a parcel of land. They don't want us to actually use that parcel of land, though. So now should town meeting follow their advice and vote unfavorable action? We must now go back to the drawing board and redesign a project to the tune of, we'll just say, six figures.
With no disrespect to the planning board, um, why are they providing a recommendation on a financial article and the finance committee is not?
So our, our bylaws require them, um, our bylaws require any land acquisition to be opined on by the planning board.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I'm glad that they, they did weigh in. I mean, I always appreciate their perspective. Um, this is frankly a jarring. I mean, it's the same five individuals, four of the five individuals, I suppose, actually, since last town meeting weighed in on the special permit. And now we're telling us to do the opposite. I mean, it just seems like a tremendous waste of our taxpayer dollars and of our staff time. So I, I mean, I, I, I certainly defer to them for direction, but when they tell us to go left and then say, oh, no, wait, now we want you to go right. I mean, that's uh, that's disappointing.
I'm sorry, did anyone have a, um, Melissa or Andrew have um insight to what they were thinking in terms of my question, which was, would they prefer us to keep the design and just not buy the land? Or would they prefer us to scratch using that land and come up with a whole new project?
I mean, we can't, we cannot keep the design. Um, and Andrew, I see just came on. They, we cannot keep the design and not buy the land because there are, you know, Mingo's already donating a parcel to us and we're only acquired this parcel because we need it. Um, and so, you know, there's not an option for them to, I don't think I haven't asked because I have. There's not an option for them to donate that second parcel. Um, so our only option would be to redesign. And Andrew, you may have even more information than I have because you look like you.
I was just going to say, I was on the, I was on the meeting call and they really only stuck to the issue at hand being the transaction itself. They didn't bring up what an alternative would be with respect to how to develop the property, how to build the project. Um, they really stuck to the transaction itself and not, and saying they felt like somehow or another it wasn't uh represented properly in their minds. And it sort of just all sort of rolled downhill. One person was speaking on that matter and then everybody sort of voted that way. Um, except for one person. I think the vote was uh like five to one or something like that, four to one, yeah.
I mean, I, I will say that I, I think that all of us are upset, I, well, I, I'm, I'm annoyed at how that development went because I do think that at different points, it was discussed in ways that weren't entirely clear about how position of that process, of that parcel would work. Um, and I know that, you know, individually and collectively, we've gone back and looked at prior discussions and recordings of meetings. I mean, but again, but that being said. This was always going to be a point, the acquisition of that parcel. Then, and we would have designed it differently. And that's, that's where my disappointment is that we're, we're at right now. I mean, I, I, I'm confident that regardless, we're delivering to our, a quality, our senior center, but I think that, you know, a lot of people. I would say, well, gee, now it's going to incur, right? So if we're talking the design. Adding to the total cost of this project or having to scale back what we promised our seniors that this project would include in order to stay on budget. And so. And the irony is it's, it's a self-inflicted wound. So our self-inflicted, um, costs, it's, you know. We collectively as a town have no one else to, to point to but ourselves is the, the reason for it. So that's disappointing.
I, I would add the other, the other piece of this that's really critical is timing. These seniors have been waiting for this project patiently. And we're right on the cusp of getting this started. And so it may be an informational thing. And again. I think putting it in the context, maybe we paint this in the context of, eh, yep, we could have explained the fin- the acquisition piece a little better. And, and basically, um. We're gonna try and help the folks that weren't so comfortable on the planning board understand that better. Because it's not just a financial, but there's also a time, a value, time value component to it for our community.
Good point. So Madam Town Manager, one final question for me is. Great point. Can we move forward as quickly as possible? I think that our seniors would, would hope for that based on what Selectman Nobley said. But regardless of, um, regardless of the decision, right? Can we afford to purchase? Um, and or can we afford to redesign? Because I think, right, that's gonna be the, the number one question. What, you know, can we afford? One or both, I should say, one or either option.
Right, so I mean, you, you remember that we have another article where we're requesting money for the design. Um, and it's, it's higher than what we, um, had originally appropriated. Um, and, you know, we have prices that are locked in right now, which I think is probably a positive in this environment. And if we have to put it off to wait another, what, year to go through the process of redesign, back through the planning board? And then, um, also finally, um, back to town meeting again. You know, I, I imagine the prices are gonna be even higher than what we have now locked in. Um, and one of the reasons why we bid the project was because we wanted to make sure that we weren't gonna have to come to town meeting and, and additional time. It's not, you know, we, one and done is, is the way we should handle these at town meeting. You don't want to have to come back for more money. And having this project bid with contractors on hand, ready to go, um, is, is really beneficial to us, so.
Mr. Chair of Mary Smidely, I do, I do want to mention that, and to her credit, our town manager came into this. In the middle of this, um, and I think has navigated her way pretty successfully on. Where some of the funds would come from that would have the least impact on the taxpayer. Um, and she should be commended to that, uh, that it, this, um, again, this was started. Well before she took the reins as town manager and, um, and I think she's done a pretty good job navigating. The town's way through this and, uh, in a good way.
Thank you. Um, I, I have one more question. So will the finance committee, I, I don't see that they have a recommendation on this article. Will they be opining on this and will they be, um, giving a recommendation?
Lynn, do you remember if they took this one up last night? I do not remember if they did.
Um, I don't, I, I don't recall. I don't think they did. Are they even listed to make?
I was wondering why they wouldn't have been listed, I, why they is given, it is a financial article, why they wouldn't be, maybe with that, a town. Bylaw that doesn't require that as well, but I wasn't sure.
Yeah, I'm wondering if it's because we're not appropriating money from the general fund or anywhere else, but it's coming from overlay and the assesses already voted if that's why. Um, you know, I can, I can certainly ask Sasha, um. And maybe it's one of the ones, sometimes she has told me that they don't always report on the articles and make a recommendation, but they may still speak on them and maybe it's one of the ones that. She, um, plans to do that with, but. Uh, Suzanne, I don't know if you have any more information on that than I do.
Um, no, she's still there, maybe I'll mute.
I am on mute, um. I actually would have to look at the charter. There's a specific charter section that says what articles that the finance committee. Um, actually takes a vote on, makes a recommendation, and I believe it is not for the acquisition of real property. But I, I have to check that and, um, get into it through my computer. And then I, I will do that and then, um, chime back in and let you know.
Okay, thank you.
So just to make this completely clear for the public, regardless of what mistakes may have happened or miscommunications. Or lack of communications or whatever in the past, we would have a choice now of spending six hundred thousand dollars from the overlay to. Buy this lot and proceed as planned. Or spend another six hundred thousand dollars most likely to redo work we already did with a new plan. And have our seniors have a less nice facility much later than they otherwise would have one. So I mean, that's the choice. Spend the same amount of money and get a worse product later. That's the only way to position this.
Nicely put, Selectman.
On that note, I'm gonna make a motion.
Okay.
Favorable action on article.
There you go.
Twelve.
Second that.
And I will second that.
Okay, we got a favorable action on our article twelve with the second, um, roll call vote, uh, Selectman Smidely.
Aye.
Selectman DeColerio, aye.
Regina Keen, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
And Richard Valancourt is a yes. Okay, moving on, articles thirteen and fourteen. The, um, finance committee has chosen to give their recommendation on the budget and the. Um, and the, uh, cap- community preservation committee's recommendation. I'm sorry, wait a minute, I got that wrong. Yes. Fourteen was not, that was been updated from today when I looked at it. But article thirteen, let's talk about article thirteen then. Uh, article thirteen, uh, appropriation for capital improvement plan for fiscal year twenty twenty one. Um, they have decided to make their recommendation at town meeting. Um, do we also want to make our recommendation at town meeting or are we ready to proceed tonight?
Um, can someone give us some insight as to the finance committee's reasoning for waiting? I'm sorry, I didn't watch the meeting.
Sure, so, um, basically what they said last night was that they were waiting on many of the articles that were financial in nature. To see if there was any changes over the next three weeks as we come towards town meeting. The budget, in particularly not the capital budget, but the regular budget, they were waiting this, um, because they are anticipating that. We will be able to negotiate an MOU with the school department and that, that MOU will give us the safeguards in place to not have to make. Any cuts during, um, this time before we come up to the budget. Um, and that MOU would be before, um, you on the, I hope your June first meeting. Um, as far as the capital budget goes, um, I think that they have those kind of in the same. Vote that they wanted to wait to see if we have any changes. I will say, and I said to them last night, that. There is no scenario that I would recommend the use of free cash to offset any operating budget issues. Um, because it just creates a structural deficit that will cause much bigger issues for us in fiscal year twenty two than any issues we currently anticipate. Um, and so I'm very comfortable with moving forward with the capital improvement budget. Um, but they did want to wait to make their recommendation at town meeting.
I, I appreciate the diligence that they're taking. I know that in conversations, regular conversations with multiple finance committee members, it's, it's really. I mean, they're playing the role they're supposed to play. They're taking the cautious dive deep approach into every single line item and. You know, they're facing the same thing that we're all facing, I think, in our professional and personal lives, which is the unprecedented nature of. The economic situation we're facing. And so, um, I mean, that being said, this, this is our budget. I mean, I, out of respect to the finance committee and. Their own, I mean, efforts to dive in. I mean, it's not political in nature, it's genuinely math. That appears to be what's driving them. And so I, I would be comfortable. I would be comfortable either way, um, because again, this is your budget, Madam Town Manager, but I, I, I don't see the harm in also waiting. Until they produce a recommendation and us do what we, we have done in the past with different articles where we've waited to see what, what their opinion is and any feedback.
Well, just to be clear, this is article, we're discussing article thirteen, which is the capital.
Yeah, I, I mean, if, if there's a delay. Um, because they're continuing to dive into the numbers and trying to see different angles as they research that topic. I mean, again, they're, they're our finance committee and I, I don't, I know that we don't always agree as two bodies. Um, but I think in this case, the reason for their delay is, um, wanting to make sure they collect as many possible facts. Honestly, in a world that feels like it's changing by the day. And I think our town manager has done a really good job of laying out just how, how much of a timeline we have when the economy kind of takes a dip. And what the impact is on municipal services. Um, but I think that again, their delay isn't just to delay for delay's sake, it's to. Continue doing their homework and watch as the world changes and to see in what ways it changes. So, right now, I'm, I'm comfortable with this capital improvement plan, but I think that the logic of waiting. You know, I would defer to the finance committee with respect to them, um, because certainly if they did recommend unfavorable action. I would want to hear why and that way. It may, depending on what they said, sway my own opinion about this and perhaps that of my colleagues.
Okay, so was there a motion in there anywhere? I didn't hear one. Does anybody, does anybody want to make a motion on this one for, or any other comments I should ask first? Okay, do we want to, do you want to make a motion? Or does anyone want to make a motion on this article?
Um, I, I would motion, I'm, I think this is the correct terminology we've used in past, past cycles. I'd motion that we wait until, um, the evening of town meeting, um. Or I, I would motion that we wait until, um, feedback from the finance committee, um, before making a recommendation on this article one way or another.
So you're gonna report at town meeting, typically reports you made at town meeting. You got it, Laurie, reports you made at town meeting.
I will adjust to say that I motion that we report at town meeting.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, uh, let's open it up for discussion as we didn't seem to get a second really quickly on that. So let's, uh. Motion, let's have a discussion on that. Um, I mean, personally, I'm, I'm okay with the CIP and I would. I would be okay with a, with a favorable, but I also understand the finance committee's recommend, um, you know, their. Desire to wait till meeting, so, you know, out of respect for the finance committee and to hear again, as Selectman DeColerio said. What they will have to weigh in on, I am okay to wait, um, and make their recommendation at town meeting as well.
Guess the only thing I would add to, to that is that, you know, what would it take for us to then? Say at town meeting, no, we don't recommend this. And I just sort of, you know, I'm kind of looking through it all, the, the really, it's the operating budget that's what's really at risk. I think kind of putting this, tying this to that. I don't know that that, um. I don't know if that's really necessary because again, if we actually would have to reconsider the, this budget. That means a whole bunch of other stuff is falling off the map, right? I mean, think all the time we've put it into this, how far it's come, we've all reviewed it, we all are comfortable with it. So for us not to be comfortable with this in. For, in, you know, a month from now, what, what would have happened? And I guess that, I guess I'm just trying to put an end, you know, kind of the end of the field on looking at this question of. Do we say okay tonight or wait a month?
It, it's a valid question. Um, you know, the finance committee could come back and recommend that some of these projects. I'm just throwing out medicals. They could come back and recommend that some of these projects be moved off to another year. Or when we have a more stable and more certain future for, uh, our economy. Um, that could be one of the recommendations they come out with. So I'm just, you know, trying to think out of the box here, but that would be my initial thought is that. You know, they come back and say, you know, is this the right time to spend money on this particular project and, you know. Provide a recommendation for, um, maybe trimming this back a little bit. To answer your question, Chris.
Yeah, that's fair. It's a discussion.
Okay, so we have a, um, we have a motion for, um, to be made at town meeting for our recommendation in a second. Uh, any further discussion?
You know, I'd like to hear from the town manager again is to, you know. What would she recommend that we do at this particular time?
Sure, I mean, I certainly understand the sentiment of wanting to wait, um, for the finance committee to, to make their recommendation. Um, and I, I respect the role of the finance committee has, um, to review. Articles of a financial nature, um, in their entirety. Um, I will note that the finance committee at, at some point had already. Um, recommended approval of this article, um, and now has, you know, said, wait a minute, we want to wait and, and I, I appreciate that. You know, I, um, above the sentiment that we know we have this free cash available. Um, it is really our checkme account is how I look at it in many ways, right? And I, I said last night that. In, in some ways to the finance committee, that I often think of free cash as like your tax refunds, right? That you would use to do your routine maintenance around your house. Um, these are all maintenance items and I'm not sure. I'm sure that it's not responsible to move our routine items off an additional year when the. Next fiscal year is the year that I'm the most concerned about. Um, and so I, I hope that as we move through this process, whether we, we deem that we want to. Um, not make a recommendation tonight or not, that we kind of keep that in our minds, that it, it would be not beneficial. To defer this meeting at this point. Um. The only hesitance I ever have is that I love to get as much information in the warrant as possible. And so I think the more things that we can take a position on, um, is, is beneficial to the public because. Sometimes when there's no recommendation in there, people kind of see that as a, as a negative thing rather than, um, just assuming that. Um, that it, there's a reason why we didn't do it, right? So those would be my sentiments, um. Thank you.
I think you're right about that. I do, I, I think that in this case, I think in any financial case, the discussion of just wanting to, to wait until the last possible moment. If only just to collect every bit of information before weighing in officially, um, given the unprecedented times. It's okay. I mean, if we, if we wait until the evening of and, you know, we are recommending favorable action based on the final input of the finance committee. That recommends favorable action. I'm, I'm sure this article will move just as quickly as it's moved. Every year for the past several years, um. Whereas if we weigh in and then things change in such a way that all of a sudden we do have to reassess again, that's an unlikely scenario. I hope that's an unlikely scenario. Um, but there's, there's no harm. It would just be my take. I mean, I, I fully support the recommendations that you put forward. You've dove into this. You know this better than any other, any other person in our community town manager.
So therefore, are you rescinding?
Not, oh, not at all. I'm not rescinding. Um, I, my motion stands because I think that we should defer. There's no harm in deferring. Um, and I don't think that, you know, with our two boards, the finance committee and board of selectmen under the scenario where we both approve favorable action. Um, if, I think that it's far more likely not printing it in the agenda and both of us being on the same page the evening of town meeting. Is more important, um, than us not being on the same page as two boards. Um, as far as to the integrity of the, this particular article passing as written. So. I, I think that right now people want to see, especially when it comes to finances, clarity and unison from all the different bodies that they, they put in place to. Get the guidance and that's why we both weigh in on these articles. So now I, I would definitely want to wait until the input from the finance committee on this. Even if it is just a formality at this point because it's more driven by the MOU.
And, and I, I think, as I said, I, I would. I would, I would like to make a favorable recommendation on this, um, and I think I agree with the town manager, you know, providing that guidance. To the, to the townspeople is kind of our job, you know, going in there, um, so when they have the printed. Um, warrant, they see where we stood on this article. I know, you know, there, there has been in the past, we, we do wait for the finance committee on some, but I think we have worked on this for a while and. um, although times have changed, so I'm, I'm going back and forth on this because, you know, with, with COVID nineteen, certainly our, our positions and things have changed. But I think I would be willing to vote favorable action on this tonight.
I agree with the chair. I'm going to rescind my second and if someone else will not second it, I will make a motion for favorable action. I think listening to the town manager, I do, um, I do agree with her, um, on this. So, but, so I'm rescinding my second. I don't think I've ever done that before, but um, if no one else will second it, then I will, uh, make a motion for favorable action.
Rosemary, I'm supportive of that too. I think if something radically changed, we have the floor that night to address it.
I agree, Chris.
But that's the other part of it in reality.
Okay, so you've withdrawn your
I am.
You know, I, I never heard that either, but okay, I, I don't know that it's not possible to do that, but we have to defer to open meeting law if we do anything against Robert's rules of etiquette here. Um, so now Phil has a motion. Do we have a, another second or someone else that would like to second Phil's motion to bring it to a vote?
I mean, just for point of parliamentary information, we often second for sake of debate. We just had a motion seconded and then participated in the debate on the motion. So then we vote on that motion on it. I mean,
No, you're right. You're right. That, that is probably the correct way to do it through Robert's rules. I'm, I'm not Mr. DeSalvo, so I don't know them all, but I think you're, you're right. Um, so why don't we do that? Since we have a motion in a second, let's take a vote on it.
So to be clear, my motion to go back was about making the recommendation on the floor of town meeting until we have heard from the finance committee.
And, and we seconded. Okay. Any further comments on that? Let's take a vote. All those in favor of the motion. Um, we'll go, we'll do a roll call vote. Selectmen Smidely.
Nay.
And Selectman DeColigero, yes.
Uh, Regina Keane, this is a tough one, but I think I'm, I think I'm going to vote nay.
Chris Nobley, nay.
And Richard Valencourt, no. Okay, so that motion fails four to one. Now do we have a second motion for the recommendation for this article?
Mr. Chair, um, I would move favorable action on this article.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Regina Keane, I'll second it.
Okay, let's discuss it. So we've kind of discussed it quite a bit already. Uh, is there any other comments that we want to make on, on this motion?
I, I would just reiterate what Chris said. If, if the finance committee comes up with something which I obviously hope they do not, um, you know, come up with some deferral that they would want to propose, we can always discuss that before town meeting and, and make our recommendation at the town meeting. I'd rather have something in the, in the warrant that um, shows our current position, which is as of the information we have today.
Okay.
We like this.
And it's not unprecedented. You know, we've done it before at town meeting where we've changed our position. So certainly not unprecedented. Okay, any other comments? All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Smidely.
Aye.
Selectman DeColigero, nay.
Regina Keane, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
Richard Valencourt, yes. Okay, favorable action on Article thirteen. Let's move to Article fourteen, which is the Community Preservation Committee Recommendations for Fiscal Twenty-One. Uh, we have a favorable recommendation from Finance Plan and Planning. Um, do we have a motion for this article?
Mr. Chair, Rosemary Smidely, uh, move favorable action on this article.
Motion, do we have a second?
Chris Nobley, second.
Okay, uh, discussion. Okay, we'll, we'll vote. Um, Selectmen Smidely.
Aye.
Selectman DeColigero, aye.
Regina Keane, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye. Okay, Article fifteen. Set salaries and compensation for elected officials. Uh, finance committee voted favorable action on this article. Uh, do I have a motion? Uh, because we're paying our own salaries, so I know
I will move, I, since I am outgoing, I will move favorable actions. It's the best one for me to.
Well, thank you. All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second. Thank you, Regina.
Any discussion? Okay, we'll go to a vote. Selectmen Smidely.
Aye.
Selectman DeColigero, aye.
Regina Keane, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
And Richard Valencourt is a yes. Okay, Article sixteen. Revolving Fund Spending Limits. Uh, we have from the finance committee a favorable recommendation.
Mr. Chair, I would move favorable action on this article.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second, Chris Nobley.
Okay, um, any discussion on Article sixteen? Okay, we'll go to a vote. Selectmen Smidely.
Aye.
Selectman DeColigero, aye.
Regina Keane, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
And Richard Valencourt is a yes. Okay, we'll move to Article seventeen, which is the General Fund for Fiscal Twenty-One. Um, we have a recommendation from the finance committee to be made at town meeting.
Mr. Chair, I do think you should wait till town meeting on this article. Um, the finance director and I are working very closely with the superintendent and the assistant superintendent um, on a potential MOU. If that MOU does not come to fruition, um, there could be changes to the budget. Um, additionally, we are still working with DLS on, um, anticipating local aid. So, um, I think that it would be in everyone's best interest to wait on this article until we, um, bring the MOU to you on June first.
Mr. Chair, I move that, uh, the board of selectmen will, um, make the recommendation at town meeting.
Second.
Okay, so we could make it a, at town meeting or at a June first meeting. If we make it at our June first meeting, it won't appear, it won't appear printed in the warrant, but we could still make it prior to our town meeting.
I'll accept your friendly amendment, Mr. Chair.
Any, any discussion? Okay, we'll move to a vote. Um, so Selectmen Smidely.
Aye.
So to be clear with the friendly amendment, this is a vote to delay until at least our June first meeting?
Correct.
Or a meeting, either one.
Yep.
Aye. Uh, Phil DeColigero, aye.
Regina Keane, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
Richard Valencourt is a yes. Okay, we'll move to Article eighteen, uh, the appropriation of the Water Enterprise Fund for Fiscal Twenty-One. Um, once again, the finance committee has been, uh, recommending waiting to town meeting to be, or is going to make the recommendation at town meeting.
I, I, right, I don't anticipate any, um, changes to the enterprise funds. Uh, they're based on rates. We're certainly not seeing water and sewer revenue going down by any means right now with everybody home. Um, and so, you know, these ones I, I have much more confidence in. Um, I have confidence in the town budget as well, but these ones I think are, are very steadfast.
Okay. So Article eighteen, we have a recommendation.
So wait, that, that being said, why did the finance committee delay weighing in on those two?
I think they decided just to wait on all the, all the, um, all the budgets. That was, that was how I understood the conversation. They were just going to wait on all of the budgets, but, I mean, yeah, these are rate based. Um, you know, and, and we don't anticipate any, any decrease in revenue for.
I mean, would they not have a transfer to capital if they weren't going to do a capital project as an example?
That could be, that could be amended. Um, right, I guess that is true.
I mean, otherwise, I mean, the personality expense is not going anywhere. Um,
I mean, I, again, I, I think that I think by us working in unison with our peers, I mean, I, I don't, I strive to try to speak to our colleagues on our different boards and I know that the, that chairwoman and other members of the finance committee have been especially chatty ever since this crisis hit. I'm probably speaking to her once or twice a week, every week since the COVID crisis hit and it was evident that there'd be an economic impact. I, I appreciate their due diligence and their job is to advise and certainly as a town resident and as a selectman, I'm, I'm eager to hear their feedback and certainly before jumping in, I don't think there's any harm in waiting or delaying for, um, their continued research and their input because I, I take what they have to say. I do take it seriously. I don't always agree with them. I don't think that we always agree with them, but um, I certainly would like to know where they're coming from, um, before I make my own decision or my own vote. So, um, I would prefer to delay on any financial budget, any financial articles, um, that they're delaying as they continue to collect information. So I would motion that we wait until the evening of town meeting on both those articles, both for the sewer and water enterprise funds.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, I'm not hearing a second. So do we have another, a different motion?
Mr. Chair, I move favorable action on Article eighteen.
Do I have a second on, on favorable for Article eighteen?
This is Regina Keane. I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for Article eighteen. For favorable recommendation. Um, any further discussion?
I will just reiterate what I said on the other one. I personally just, I appreciate their due diligence and I appreciate, uh, Selectman DeColigero's point of wanting to um, hear their opinion. I guess I just see that, think it would be very unlikely that this would change and in the event that it would, I would certainly listen to their opinion and my recommendation could change. Well, I won't be on the board at the town meeting, but you guys could change your recommendation.
We'll be voting now, so.
Yeah, yes. So that's my reasoning.
Yeah, and I, I agree that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Chris.
I, I would echo that and add that in terms of, of, uh, really the work that the finance committee has done, it is the, the huge piece, which is the operating budget that we are particularly focused on. And I think these are in the, between the capital and these improvement, uh, and these enterprise funds. Um, these are not as impacted potentially and not as, uh, and, and are involved, uh, and intricate as the operating budget. And so I think that's why I'm comfortable in going forward with these, knowing that the, you know, the gorilla, the eight hun- hundred pound gorilla, we still have time and we're going to wait until the finance committee finishes digesting.
And yet the finance committee has continued to delay on these through their very frequent discussions. Again, both offline and then also of course during their meetings about why they'd like to hold off. And so they're continuing to do that work. I just, there's no harm in waiting. Um, however, there is harm if we go into town meeting and if things happen that they decide, well, gee, I'm not going to support that as a board. We then have disagreement and we may actually be disagreeing. You know, there's no guarantee that we would be switching our position. Um, or the positions that have been previously expressed on these financial articles. I, I, um, I guess I just don't know why we wouldn't wait for the nine residents who have been working diligently to dive into our budgets. Um, for them to come to a conclusion. I mean, they've discussed these very articles and chosen to delay in an effort to collect more information.
So Phil, right, so just take that directly. So if in fact, um, their position, we, we have an affirmative position, comes to town meeting and we stand with that affirmative position and they do not, then we've stuck with our position. If something has changed, then we're in, we're in absolute perfect, uh, opportunity for us to say, here's what our decision was and because we listened, because we are, we considered it and we are weighing this, we do change our position. I think in, in, in some ways that actually shows that we particularly can listen. There's, there's no way to look at that too, you know?
So that's, that's laying out there's a scenario though in that option where we could not change our position. I just don't understand why there's, there's absolutely zero harm in waiting there. That is not a true statement that can be made by weighing in prior to the finance committee. However small, um, there is zero harm in waiting until getting their input before we vote on recommendations. Again, we don't have to agree with them, but we are literally saying, well, we're just going to jump ahead and provide, you know, our opinions on these articles. When you have consciously decided, let's wait and continue collecting information. I mean,
So, so just a question of what, you know, I, I understand the cap, the, the budget and, you know, potential for changes in the budget if, if, you know, for the, for the main budget, but for these, what, what do we see as potential that could change? These are like rate based as the town manager has said, and that we have, um, very little, you know, chance of anything changing within these particular budgets. Um, what I thought I heard was that the finance committee had just decided that they would wait on all budgetary articles because, um, you know, to start because of uncertainty at this point, but I don't know what on the water and sewer enterprise fund would have the opportunity to change the rate base.
I, I can't predict the unknowns of the future. I'm just saying that's why we would, we would wait. Um, because the worst case scenario for waiting is we hear their input and decide to come up with a different position. I mean, we, we do it all the time. We have done it in prior years. This is the one year where there were so many things we don't know week to week. I mean, professionally in our, again, personal lives, professional lives, and even as a municipality, I just, for those nine people who are working on the finance committee, I don't, I don't see the harm in us as a board waiting. So that way we're able to speak in unison by approving it ahead of time where we can guarantee that we can choose to speak in unison at town meeting by weighing in prior to them being able to weigh in or at least express their opinion as the board that's supposed to be advising. I mean, it's just, it's, it's too bad. I just, again, again, that's my particular position. So, um, I mean, I know that they ask it at town meeting and that would, I mean, that's my position with any of the residents. I'd like to wait till we hear from our, our finance committee before weighing in on the budget.
Understood. Any other comments? Okay, we'll move to a vote. Um, so this is just for Article eighteen, right? When I, we can be both. So, um, do, okay, Selectmen Smidely.
Aye.
Selectman DeColigero, no.
Regina Keane, aye.
Uh, Chris, are you still on? Okay, I'm going to assume we lost Chris. Selectman Nobley, you have a vote on this article? Okay, I'm going to be a yes, which gives us a three to one vote and one, um, abstention due to technical difficulties. So I would say that that a, is a pass. Okay, we'll move to Article nineteen, the Sewer Enterprise Fund. Uh, same as the, uh, earlier article on Article eighteen, the finance committee has decided to wait to make their recommendation at town meeting. Um, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move favorable action on this article with all due respect to the finance committee, but I still do have favorable action on this article.
I will second.
Okay, discussion, new discussion. I mean, I'm in a position, Phil, we've already discussed it. It must have got something different to add.
I, I, again, the town moderator asks for dissenting opinions at town meeting, so, um, it's a moot point.
Okay. We'll move to a vote. Okay, did we lose Selectmen Smidely as also?
Oh, no, oh, I'm sorry. I, I, I didn't, I, I think I missed part of what you said, but no, I'm here.
Okay, and for the record, Selectman Nobly did text me on my cell phone, and he did vote yes on Article eighteen as favorable.
Good for him. They get out of way.
And, okay, so we're now back to nineteen, Selectmen Smidely, you voted yes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Selectmen Decalagero, no.
Regina Keane, yes.
Okay, Chris is not on. So Richard Valencourt, yes, so that is a three to one vote, so that is favorable with one abstention. Due to technical difficulties. Okay, let's move to Article twenty, the Stevens Estate. Once again, Finance Committee has recommended to, or has made, will make their recommendation at town meeting. Do we have a motion on the Stevens Estate Enterprise Fund?
Madam Town Manager, do you have any comments on this one? So, so we are in a similar situation. I could tell you that we do have many cancellations for this summer. But that all but one of them have been rescheduled for next fiscal year. The one that did not reschedule, the gentleman who was in the army and actually shipping out, and so we refunded him his deposit. But other than that, all of our cancellations have rescheduled, so we do anticipate. That. We will have revenue coming in in fiscal year twenty-one. Of course, we are causing of the fact that we do not know when we will be able to open the Stevens Estate. Um, and so what will happen with that is that our expenses will also fall off. Um, and so we won't be spending as much money next year if we're not operating. If you, if you want to wait on this one, will we continue to do analysis of what's coming in? That I, I, I completely understand that, and we can certainly bring more data to you. At our June first meeting, you know, obviously this one, you know, water and sewer is, is very insulated. Unfortunately, the Stevens Estate is much less insulated from COVID nineteen. You know, it, it's an unfortunate situation for them.
You know, I've been. Getting some information because I'm, I'm on this committee as well, that I guess they, there are some, I, I, I agree we should wait, but I've been hearing that there is some promising news. As well, so maybe another week we'll have a little bit more information and. Put us in a better position to, to vote. Won't be in the. Again, so, and I, my understanding is that they're working pretty hard at the estate and making it. You know, safe and user friendly, so I guess we need to see also, too, what the governor will be doing, and if they in fact can, can do what they're hoping to do, so I think there. There is potential for some good news coming out of the Stevens Estate as we go forward, but I agree, let's hear, I, I agree with the town manager. This one's a little trickier. And a lot of it depends on the governor and the, the virus, so. Maybe we'll have some good, good news. At our next meeting and able to make a decision.
So is there a motion?
Okay, fair enough. I would move that. We make our recommendation either at the forthcoming meeting in, in June, June first, or at town meeting.
This is Regina Keane, I will second that.
Okay, any discussion? Selectmen Smidely, how do you vote?
Aye.
Selectmen Decalagero, aye.
Regina Keane, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
And Richard Valencourt is a yes. Before we move to Article twenty-one, Selectman Nobley, you were not present for the last vote on Article nineteen. I don't know if you've heard the debate. The, we. I don't know, well, actually, I'm, I'm gonna vote standards the way it was, unless you, and, and you can weigh in at town meeting if you'd like to.
Yep, that's what I did hear it. I was in the affirmative, but you, but I dropped off, so I understand and I appreciate that.
But you were in the affirmative. You did hear the discussion, though. You heard the debate.
Absolutely did, yes.
Okay, so then I, I would accept that vote as a yes then, for Article nineteen.
Thank you.
So that would make it a four to one vote. We just couldn't hear you due to technical problems.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll move to Article twenty-one, transfer to stabilization. Finance Committee made a favorable action, recommend favorable action. Transfer of twenty thousand two hundred thirty-three dollars. Into stabilization fund.
Mr. Chair, I move favorable action on Article twenty-one.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, Selectmen Smidely, how do you vote?
Aye.
Selectmen Decalagero, aye.
Regina Keane, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
And Richard Valencourt, yes. Article twenty-two, transfer to capital stabilization, to see if the town will vote to transfer. Four hundred thirteen thousand eight dollars from available funds of free, or free cash into the capital stabilization fund. Finance Committee voted in favorable action. Or motion?
Mr. Chair, as I said, daily, move favorable action on Article twenty-two.
Chris Nobley, second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, let's go to a roll call votes. Selectmen Smidely?
Aye.
Selectmen Decalagero, aye.
Regina Keane, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
And Richard Valencourt is a yes. Article twenty-three, transfer of funds from free cash for other post-employment benefits, oh, I'm sorry, to other post-employment benefits liability trust fund. Finance Committee has recommended favorable action.
Mr. Chair, I move favorable action on Article twenty-three.
Chris Nobley, second.
Any discussion?
Glad we're doing this and sticking with it.
Okay, good. All right, Selectmen Smidely?
Aye.
Selectmen Decalagero, aye.
Regina Keane, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
And Richard Valencourt is a yes. Article twenty-four, transfer of funds from free cash to fiscal year twenty twenty school department revolving fund, two hundred fifty thousand from free cash. Finance Committee has voted favorable action. School Committee has voted favorable action. Uh, how do we, how would we like to proceed?
Move favorable action?
Do we have a second?
I'll second. It's Regina Keane.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, Selectmen Smidely, how do you vote?
Aye.
Selectmen Decalagero, aye.
Regina Keane, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
And Richard Valencourt is a yes. Okay, Article twenty-five, approved payment of prior year's unpaid bills.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say the Finance Committee has voted favorable action.
Yeah, I really support that we pay our unpaid bills, so I would move favorable action.
Regina Keane, second.
Okay, Selectmen Smidely, how do you vote?
Aye.
Selectmen Decalagero, aye.
Regina Keane, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
And Richard Valencourt is a yes. Okay, moving to Article thirty. Article thirty is almost there. Amend the zoning bylaw. Chapter one ninety-five, permitted signs industrial districts. Quite a bit of verbiage here with some changes. The planning board has, since our last time meeting, has voted favorable action for Article thirty. Do we have a motion?
Move favorable action, Chris Nobley.
Regina Keane, second.
Have a motion and a second for favorable action. Any discussion? Okay, Selectmen Smidely, how do you vote?
Aye.
Selectmen Decalagero, aye.
Regina Keane, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
And Richard Valencourt is a yes. Okay, final one, Article thirty-one, tax increment finance agreement. We had a lengthy discussion on this tonight. We do not have recommendations from the planning board or the Finance Committee. So we'll be breaking, either making a recommendation now or waiting for their recommendations.
Mr. Chair, I move favorable action on Article thirty-one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for favorable action on Article thirty-one.
I was all prepared to convince Phil to vote on this with, even though.
This is a separate issue, again.
This is important to have in the warrant that we support this.
Yeah.
But, but this is a real agreement, this is not existing spending agreement, there's a difference.
All right. Darn, I'll turn off my. My sales pitch.
Phil, do it if you want, and we're only.
No, I'm kidding. I'm getting slap happy, sorry.
All right. Okay, so any further discussion on this? Okay, Selectmen Smidely, how do you vote?
Aye.
Selectmen Decalagero, aye.
Regina Keane, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
And Richard Valencourt is a yes. Okay, that gets us through the warrant article recommendations. Thank you all for your patience and your contributions. Let's move to our next business, order businesses to vote allocate an additional hundred thousand dollars from the, from the Affordable Housing Trust. The Great Lawrence Community Action Council Emergency Mental Assistance Program. So if you recall, a few meetings back, we had allocated a hundred thousand dollars. That program was very well received and very much needed by a lot of individuals in town. So the Affordable Housing Trust met again a week or so ago and recommended an additional hundred thousand dollars to help. Additional residents of this town to pay their rent during this unprecedented time. I will turn to the Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust to add anything to that.
I don't really have anything to add. I can answer any questions. What's happening is. At the beginning. We were inundated with applications. We have just about gotten through all of them except for maybe fourteen, I believe. As of today. We have committed over ninety-two thousand dollars in funding. And the reason why it's. Not as much as we had anticipated was because of the extra six hundred dollars that people are getting as part of their unemployment. So some people are actually benefiting more with the unemployment. But that ends in July, so we anticipate that applications are gonna pick up again. Come August first, and so I'm actually gonna be talking with the trust tomorrow. We have a meeting about extending the program, because right now we have a deadline of. July. First. I believe it is. So we do have a need at this point. You know, any money not expended, obviously it'll go back into the trust, but. There is a need there.
Okay. Any?
I, I would move favorable action on this.
Second.
Wait a second. Okay, did I hear a second? I've not heard a second yet.
I think Phil seconded.
Okay, wait a second. Okay, we have a discussion? I, I just wanna say I think this is a great program that this town offers and, and for assistance to those who really, really need it. To maintain their rent and not get, you know, further behind. In, in at least one area, so I think this is a great program, and, you know, the Affordable Housing Trust is certainly a group that. You know, is very diligent and means often and, and really looks to help individuals in need, so I'm totally in favor of this. Okay, any other, any comments? All right, let's move to vote. Selectmen Smidely?
Aye.
Phil Decalagero, aye.
Regina Keane, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
And Richard Valencourt is a yes. All right, we'll move on. Approval of the minute, so we have minutes from April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty, open session. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair. Moved that the Board of Selectmen approved the open session minutes of April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, as written.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second, Chris Nobley.
Any discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call votes. Selectmen Smidely?
Aye.
Selectmen Decalagero, aye.
Regina Keane, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
Richard Valencourt is a yes. Okay. Consent items, we have two items under consent items tonight. One is to sign, sign the town warrant, and the other is a really fun thing to approve a parade for our graduating seniors. Do I have a motion on the consent items?
So this, we can put lump together, so correct, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would move. I would move favorable action on both of these consent items.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
No, other than hopefully people come out to cheer on our graduates.
Yes, absolutely, and, and my only question is how are we gonna, logistically, how are we gonna sign that warrant? Do we need to physically sign it each of us?
We have a few documents we need you to sign, the personnel policy, once it's, which is completed, and this document. And Laurie, I believe we need a wet signature on the warrant, correct?
We do. It's actually in the chair's mailbox, so I don't know if you wanna go in and just sign and leave it in the next mailbox.
Yep, I'll do that tomorrow. Uh, no, it'll be a little tomorrow. I'll do it on Thursday.
Thank you.
And I'll send a text message when I've signed it and passed it on. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Selectmen Smidely, how do you vote?
Aye.
Selectmen Decalagero, aye.
Regina Keane, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
And Richard Valencourt is a yes. Okay, so consent items. All right, we have no old business. Moving on to town manager's report. Madam Town Manager, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. So we don't, we, we really are not filling any positions that are not required at this point or essential. It's obviously very hard to. Come to a new job when everyone is pretty much telecommuting from most offices. So what's happening is if you have a position that opens, you have to submit a memo to me about why it needs to be filled immediately, and then I have to give you written permission to fill it. So many of our positions are kind of in a lag. We have gone ahead and posted. We have gone ahead and posted the veterans assistant position, because obviously that department is quite busy right now with giving assistance to veterans that needed due to COVID. But most of the positions are currently on hold. The next thing that we wanted to talk about was our updates on our plans and our protocols for the election, and our town clerk, Trudy Reed. Is here with us as well, and we did attach those protocols to the agenda so that you could see them. We've been working to staff the election to the best of our ability at this point. We do anticipate that we are going to require. Some town staff as well as perhaps some town clerks from other communities that are willing to help us. Due to understandably, some people not wanting to work the election on June second. The protocols that we have set up right now is that voters will line up outside of the high school. The line will be managed by the emergency management department in order to ensure sufficient social distancing. The Board of Health is going to determine the number of residents that will be allowed in the building at a time. Voters will be asked their precincts, and if there's somebody already at that table, we will not allow that voter to come forward. They'll have to continue to wait to make sure there's only one person per precinct at a time. Masks will, of course, be required. Masks will of course be required. If a resident cannot wear a mask for a medical reason, they will be sent to a separate voting area, which will then be completely disinfected. For traffic flow, we are using separate entrances for the entrance and the exit, and the police emergency management will be there to make sure that people do not congregate in the parking lot. We have, we're doing a practice run on this, but we are increasing the space between precincts. There will only be one voting booth per precinct since we're only letting one party up at a time, and that layout will be reviewed by the health department. We're installing double tables for check-in and checkout, I'm sure you've seen that if you've gone to pick out prescription at CVS where there's not just the one table in front of the person, but a second table in order to ensure that distance. The person will name, will say their name very loudly, there'll be one person for each precinct at check-in and one person at each precinct at checkout. And that checkout person will also monitor the ballot box. The check-in tables and the voting booths will be cleaned after every voter. The workers will be given safety bags with all the equipment that they will need, pens will be disposable. Again, we'll have masks available for people who do not have them or who forget them. We're instituting a three, three shift for that day, so it'll be a little bit different from what we're used to, but in order to have less people interacting with each other, we've created smaller shifts with people leaving and then coming. We will not have any food due to sanitary requirements, one of the things that has been pretty clear is that eating among people, taking your mask off and having food is not a great situation with COVID, and those shorter shifts should certainly help with people not needing to have meal breaks. For poll observers and the count observers, we will be talking with the candidates in advance to let them know that we're limiting the number of people in the building and so they may be affected to the number of people that they can have observing. And we'll have one Board of Register who are meeting with them tomorrow afternoon, present per shift to assist the town clerk with inactive voter registration issues, and Trudy, am I missing anything?
No, I don't believe so.
So we've been meeting to try to come up with, with Brian, to come up with the, the best, safest scenario for us to have a successful and organized election, and we feel that we've gotten there with these new rules.
Yeah, this is great, are other communities following these same rules? I mean, is this common? And this is certainly a very comprehensive list of safety protocols. I'm assuming other communities have either jumped on board with this or should be.
They are, I've had a few, I'm sorry, I've had a few ask me to share our protocols with them. And I know a lot of municipalities are still even struggling just coming up with the date, so there's, I think we're ahead of this.
That's great, thank you, Trudy, this is great.
So, the message to the public is, is pretty clear that you, you encourage absentee ballot, but if you choose to go and vote in person, you absolutely can in the town of North Yandover, and safety protocols will be in place, correct?
Correct, we're gonna make it as safe as possible, but we are encouraging people to vote by absentee, correct, Trudy?
We are, but because we're not have, we're not open to the public to vote at the counter like many absentee people will do, I have to say that the, the window is getting smaller and smaller to request that absentee ballot and to get it returned back to us by the close of polls, so as of next week, we're down to one week before the, the election, so if you're going to get that application and it needs to be in as soon as possible so that we have time to get it mailed to you and you have time to get it back to us.
Yeah, we should, we should push that out on social media again.
I don't know how many more times I can push it out there, it's out there every week.
Well, you know, and I know some of the candidates have also been pushing it as well, so that's, that's all good.
Right, I would also like to add that if you're still holding a ballot, please get it returned to us, we have mailed out over fourteen hundred ballots, but we probably only have a couple of a hundred back, and that's between the early voting and the absentee. So I'm, I'm surprised that we don't have as, you know, you know, close to a thousand back considering that we've sent out over fourteen hundred, fifteen hundred, so that's, that's concerning, yeah, that's a little concerning to me.
You've only actually gotten a couple hundred back?
Yeah, I mean, they're all in a file drawer, I mean, I can look at them and glance at them, it's not like that they're, they're flowing over in my office, so they're still manageable at this point. So I'm hoping not everybody's gonna wait till June second to return it, because there's a process that we have to check it in, and it would be much easier if everybody would try to get it back to us sooner than later.
Anything else on the election?
Trudy, what should, if there's a, if there's a family, a couple that have requested an absentee ballot and only one received it, and a notable amount of time has passed, what's that process? Because I know that there was at least one resident, right, where her and her husband both requested a ballot, and she had reached out today and I didn't hear what the response was, but how, how, how should a resident go about that, or should they be alarmed if they don't?
No, so what, so I've had a couple of people in this situation, so what I'm telling them, if they've just recently, if one has just recently received it, to give it a few more days, because those ballots could have been mailed on the same day at the exact same time, but once it leaves our office, it's all in the control of the post office. If it's been considerable amount of time, a week or more, what we need from that resident is a letter in writing with their signature that they did not receive their ballot, and then that allows us to reject the first one in our system and to mail out a second one. So that's our way of keeping track, so I do need something in writing with their signature, they can take a picture of it and scan it, scan it to me so that I have it on email, they can drop it off in the mailbox out, outside of Town Hall, but it does require their signature that they've not received their first ballot.
Remind us what happens on election day if somebody had requested in advance an absentee ballot, they got the absentee ballot, and for whatever reason, they misplaced it, they threw it away, can they show up at the polls and still cast a ballot if they haven't yet mailed it?
Anybody that's, whether they've returned their absentee ballot or not, this only applies to absentee and not early voting, as long as we have not processed that ballot, they still have the choice of voting in person. Early voting is different, normally we don't do early voting for a municipal election, but because of COVID nineteen, the state has allowed it. But our famous, the clerk's famous saying for early voting is one and done, you don't have any other chances. With absentee, you do.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments on the upcoming election? Okay, well, Trudy, thank you for hanging on with us all night and.
It's been interesting.
Well, that's one way of putting it. And.
Thank you.
About hanging on all night, Brian, thank you for hanging on, on all night for the COVID nineteen update.
No problem.
Listen to that now.
I think, is Frank here too, Brian?
He was for the first hour or so, I don't know if he's still here or not.
So Brian and I both have separate updates, I'll let Brian go first, if that works for you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, absolutely.
Poor Brian, still in his office.
Alright. I'm gonna just go through a couple of numbers just to give you guys a picture of what's going on. As of right now, Massachusetts has almost eighty-eight thousand cases. Northern has just over two hundred and sixty, with a few probables that the lab results are pending. Last month, about a month ago, was the anticipated peak. We read about fifty-eight thousand cases, but they were climbing really quickly, and that was the problem, that's what they were afraid of. They were averaging about two thousand cases a day, which is pretty high back in mid-April. Yesterday, we only had about eight hundred and seventy-three positive cases, so the, the daily average, the number's gone way down, which is what they're hoping for with all the social distancing and all the protocols we've basically put in place and been doing for the past month, so definitely going in the right direction, which is why we got to phase one. The percentage of the positive tests was at about twenty-five percent back in mid-April, we're down to about ten percent, which is really good. The number of hospitalizations was about almost four thousand throughout the state about a month ago, and now we're down to about twenty-five hundred. So one of the biggest things is hospital capacity and ICU bed capacity to basically get through this hump. Right now, our long-term care employees are doing really well. We're still having cases in them right now, but there's about seventy-five active cases with a few more positives today. But about fifty of these are actually gonna be coming off of isolation, so they've made it through that entire process, and now they're getting better, and they're gonna be done with the virus, which is actually a really good sign. We are obviously in constant contact with them. We talk to them all the time, we've supported them with PPE, we've had Zoom calls and Carments calls with them in the state throughout this process. Each facility has been assigned a state Epi to work with them on every individual case and to assist with overall infection control. And so have been actually issued a, a state surveyor, which is to assist them on like staffing needs if they have a decline in staffing because of positive workers. And then patient layout and floor plans and moving patients around from areas where they can kind of hoard the positive patients and get them away from people that aren't sick yet, to try to keep them separated and keep the infection control going strong. So they're still closed for visitors at this time. But as I'm sure you all know, and I mentioned before, we're now into phase one, which is fantastic, so businesses are starting to get back to work, it's starting to reopen, and what that is, is they came up with phase one yesterday. So some of the essential businesses that were allowed to operate, obviously can still maintain operations, and they announced the ability for a place of worship to now begin having services up to forty percent oxy capacity, which is really good. So and then next week, next Monday on May twenty-fifth, additional businesses may also open. They include laboratories and life science facilities, offices, but losses can be limited to twenty-five percent capacity. So if you have an office of eight workers, you can have two in there at basically any given time. They're strongly encouraging people working from home and telecommuting. But now car washes are available, hair salons and barber shops can also open up as of next Monday, pet grooming, and then outdoor recreational facilities and activities can start to take place. Playgrounds are still closed, they're anticipated to be open on phase two, which is in a few weeks, give or take, depending on how phase one goes and how the numbers go with the hospitalization rate, number of beds being taken up and the number of positive cases per day as an overall average. And they're averaging these out over the course of a week now to see how that trend goes. So you have spikes that go up every day and down every day, back and forth, but it's the overall week average you're gonna be looking at. So all, all businesses must actually self-certify and meet mandatory workplace standards that have been put out on the DPH's website, and I got them up on our website earlier today as well for individual businesses and classifications of businesses like construction, hair salons, things like that have their own checklist and criteria. The beaches can also open, which is really good. So I met, I talked to Kelly Ray, who runs Stevens Pond about getting them up and running, so she's very excited about that, which is really good. So all, all the things that do have to happen include social distancing, hygiene protocols, employee trainings, and then all the sector, sector-specific protocols that they put out there. So yeah, those are up on the website, I'm gonna get more up tomorrow, we got more of them up this afternoon. So let's see, so camps are gonna be allowed to open in phase two as well, that was one of the big things that we were talking about in our circles because we permit camps as well, so they're all calling us, finding out when they can open. Unfortunately, some camps have already closed for the summer because they were either residential camps and had to get their information in starting now. We couldn't quite pull it together, but camps will be open in phase two, they'll also have new criteria and restrictions in terms of how they are allowed to operate. So we've also been working with the Town Hall Reopening Committee, I know the guidance just came out yesterday, kind of threw a couple of wrenches in our plans, but we're gonna work on that, get that taken care of. Been working with the town meeting group with moderator and getting them set up and seeing what we can do with them to get this done safely, as well as the election working group. We're also gonna be opening, doing a business reopening working group as well, I think we're gonna be meeting next week on that to work on getting businesses up and running with these new set criteria and get them kind of off to the races, I hope. Also been working with Merrimack College, they've had a lot of questions in terms of summer activity, staffing over the summer as well as what's gonna happen in the fall, so if everything goes well, and the phases go according to what they're predicting, they should be okay in the fall, but obviously there's setbacks and there's things to take into account over the next several weeks. I have talked to Brooks as well, they're kind of holding pat right now on what they're gonna do because they have a lot of questions in terms of food service, dormitories, student body, and you know, their classrooms and things like that, so there's a lot that we're gonna be working on with them. And then we are doing the daily contact tracing, isolating and quarantine in close contacts and following up with all of the positive patients in town here. It's been a long haul. Like Groundhog Day every day, I think, but we're working on it, and if you guys have any questions, feel free to ask away.
Brian, how is that contract tracing working? Do you have a outside premise doing it, or are you guys doing it yourselves?
We are doing it ourselves, but we recruited help from the school nurses. We, when this first started to go down, we knew what we were gonna have to do. So we talked to Charlotte Barzak, and she was gracious enough to say, hey, I have nurses that are being paid and are working, offered up to them, a bunch of them took it, and we got them trained on the software that we use to do the close contact tracing and all of the input for the state Epi's. There is a program through the state, if we do get overwhelmed, there's the CTC program that the state rolled out for other communities that don't have the staff or have the number of cases that overwhelm their staff to kind of rely on, so we have that as a backup, but right now we are handling everything in-house.
Okay.
Brian, really nice, Meddely, thank you for that very comprehensive report. You've been very, very busy, but the nice thing about your report, there's, there's positive things to happen now and to look forward to, and I think that even as a wall of Board of Health, it's actually probably emotionally very healthy for most of the citizens, so thank you for that. I, is there any discussion or anything coming from the Governor's Office on the library opening up anytime soon?
As the Town Hall Reopening Committee is working on, and we'll see, can talk about this more, about curbside pickup first to start with, and then seeing how kind of progresses from there, but I think that's the initial phase is curbside.
And that would be, can you do a guesstimate as to how far off that would be?
I think we were talking.
Yeah, we're working, that's okay, we're, we actually, we're not a hundred percent sure, we released, we're working internally on, on a working group document for all of our buildings. The advice that came from the Governor was that in the next couple of weeks, the library will be able to open for curbside pickup, which is new. Up until yesterday, the library was deemed as non-essential, so this is certainly a change. Obviously, we are working with, with not just the working group, but now with the department heads as well as the employees to implement safeguards to allow them to start doing that, and so we anticipate that we'll be able to have that up and running in the next couple of weeks.
That sounds very good, and I'd like to just make one comment that ties into this whole discussion from the Board of Health, and again, thank you, Brian, I am sure you are exhausted and your staff. But I'd like to shout out to the Yi family of China Blossom, who has donated thousands of masks to not only our fire department and our first responders, but also have made it available to, you know, other organizations in need in the area. But again, I just, again, the Yi family in China Blossom has donated, donated a lot of masks to, to help people stay safe.
Yeah, thank you, and we've had so many citizens, so many people have stepped up and donated so much, I mean, our, the senior standard is overflowing with food, and it's just tremendous to see how folks have really stepped up and helped out in these very troubling times, so thank you to the Yi family and all those folks who have stepped up to donate.
Right, and Mr. Chair, if I could just build off of what Brian was saying about the working group that we're forming. So we, we, as you know, as I've, I've shared, we do have a working group that has been working on our internal buildings, and at this point, we also are starting an additional working group that's gonna be working on helping support our businesses as they reopen safely, and so that composition is going to be myself, the Director of Community Economic Development, the Planning Director, the Chief of Police, our Building Inspector, the Health Director, a member of the Board of Health, and we would like to have some of the selectmen help us with that as well. And so what that group will be doing is developing a comprehensive set of guidelines and resources for businesses, helping them with getting PPE, developing streamlined information regarding. And so what that group will be doing is developing a comprehensive set of guidelines and resources for businesses, helping them with getting PPE, developing streamlined information regarding processes. So if, do you need licensing? Do you need any permits, know how to do outside seating or other things that we anticipate maybe coming forward as we move through this process? And so if, if there is, you know, getting PPE, if they don't have PPE and et cetera, leveraging our relationships to help businesses as they move forward. And so if there is a, a board member or even two board members, because I think this is probably going to be a lot of work and we can separate this work out and go in, in multiple directions. That would be willing to help with that. We would very much appreciate it.
Yeah, Madam Chair, Mr. Chair, I mean, Madam Town Manager and Mr. Chair, I would certainly be willing to volunteer to serve on that committee. Rosemary Smedili.
Okay, you know, I'm, I'm fine with that. But the town manager said there's a possibility of a need for two, anybody else?
I would, I would love to be on that as well, Mr. On, Mr. Chairman, just diving in all day with the business community. It's interesting what curveballs are being thrown as, as they weigh, what things need to be reopened and how the municipality can step in and help. So it's been interesting to see how different towns and cities are responding and taking ideas from each other.
And I think your involvement in the Northin River Emergency Association puts you in a good position to work with local businesses. So great. And I think, you know, I'm sure as we move forward, that there's other requirements for folks, we can all jump in, in, in other ways as well. So thank you two for stepping up and.
Thank you.
We'll see how we go forward.
I, I'm, I know this is on your list as well, and the list is long of stuff you guys are focused on. And I appreciate all the efforts. I just want to add, I guess, I think the importance of us figuring out how to open the playgrounds and Stevie Pond this summer, especially in light of the camps being closed. I mean, we have to have things for these kids to do, bouncing off the walls. And we've talked about, we talk about every year how Stevens Pond is so important to the community. And I think it will be even more so this year. So I'm just hopeful we're able to put the right restrictions in place for how it can be used or whatever, but that we will be able to get that open as well as the other youth, youth services that we offer in the summer.
Yep, we will be able to do that.
We're meeting on Thursday with the crew and I know Brian's had conversations today already about Stevens Pond. Brian and I have two tin cans and a string now. We just kind of yell to each other all day. But, and we're reading minds now, which is scary, but we, he has had conversations today. And we had a meeting on Thursday to talk about the beaches and camp. The playgrounds are a little problematic because they, they're phase two and so we'll have to wait until we get to phase two to be able to, to open those. But we certainly can, can start figuring out some of our other outside resources. And it should be reiterated that our parks and our open spaces are open for passive use. So while you cannot play organized sports or any contact sports in our parks in open spaces, they are open for people to use for passive recreation.
All right, great. Well, thank you for those updates. Any other comments or questions or any other updates?
I have nothing for them.
I, I did have a question about the grant program that we had. Did we send out hard letters to people who were accepted for the rent, the rent support? And people that were declined or denied, did they receive?
I believe we did send out hard letters. We have expended all of those funds. Checks have actually already gone out because I've already signed the warrant on all of them, I believe. So yes, I do believe that everyone has been alerted, but I can check. If you know of somebody who did not get a response, please make sure you have them call me.
Yeah, they said that they got a response that they got, that they, the application was accepted. But when they read the email, it sounded very much like it meant the, that you received the application and not that they were approved for funds.
Yeah, have them give me a call and I'll, I'll follow up.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all. So we'll move to selectman update comments. Does anybody have anything?
Chris here. The only thing I'd add is we've got graduation coming up for, for our seniors. And there's just been tremendous outpouring across the town to, to support them. And that's just, just, it's been wonderful. One last thing I think we're trying to do as a community is, you know, put any kind of signage or video message to support them. And that is being coordinated on Facebook by Jennifer Rivers. So, you know, if you want to send a thank you there to her, text it to her, she's going to put that all together in a video. But again, it's been really amazing to watch how people and businesses across this community have really worked hard to, to try and make this a special graduation for, for all these kids this year. It's, it's really been heartwarming to see.
Mr. Chair, also too, the patriotic observance committee will be filming for the memorial day and it should be really very interesting. The group has put a lot of time and effort. They'll be filming a lot of it tomorrow and it will be airing for the citizens to be able to watch the memorial day. And I think you will find it to be very interesting and certainly give the respect to, to those who have died in, in the line of service. Having said that, there's also part of the patriotic observance committee is asking people to decorate their front doors in the front of their property very patriotically over the next few days. You know, get the kids involved in a show of, of support because we will not be having formal, a formal event because of COVID. So you know, this is a project you can get, get the kids busy on is to decorate your, your front door in your home with a very patriotic theme. So I hope people will listen and participate.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right. Our next meeting will be Monday, June 1st, the night before the election. So we will see you all on Monday, June 1st. Please stay safe, stay socially distant and be happy.
Thanks, everybody.
Oh, move to adjourn.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. Selectman Smedili, how do you vote? Okay.
Selectman DeColigero, aye.
Regina Keen, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
Richard Valencourt, yes. Good night, everyone. Thank you all.
Night.
Good night.